Welcome to the special meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is October 19th, 2022. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance by Councilmember Cosdun.
Today, we give thanks for the many people who are moving our community forward after Hurricane Ian. The first responders, the utility workers, the cleanup crews, the construction workers, everyone who went to work serving the community despite having suffered losses of their own. Neighbors helping neighbors, people coming from out of town. Heartwarming stories of individuals and businesses sharing whatever they had, doing whatever they could to make life better for those who desperately needed comfort and practical assistance. We realize the pressing need for continued progress. We've learned that when we work together, we can accomplish much. We ask for strength, endurance, compassion, and guidance through this most difficult time. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Cosdun.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Tate.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item five is changes to the agenda. The only thing that I would like to add, I've asked both of the major internet providers in our city to attend this evening's meeting. We do have a person from Comcast that will be here, present in our meeting. And we do have someone from CenturyLink that will be participating by teams. And I would like to stick them directly after Citizens Input so they can bring us up to speed on what their two businesses are providing for the city. So, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, can I respectfully request that they appear after staff's hurricane recovery update? That might better put things into perspective because we do have a variety of people that are here to address several issues related to the hurricane. So if you don't mind, I would prefer staff give their presentation first and then we can turn it over to Comcast, CenturyLink, and then all the other partners that are here.
Okay, if that's the case, then I would like to bring that up. Staff presentation to directly after Citizens Input time. Because I know these two companies have the representatives here. I was trying to get them up in the beginning.
Actually, we have our presentation before Citizens Input.
Oh, okay, good. All right, we'll do that then.
Motion to approve the agenda has changed. Second.
All right, any other comments? See none? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosdun.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Tate.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item six is the business six A is Hurricane Ian update. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Councilmember Cosdun mentioned in her invocation, the city of Cape Coral went through a very traumatic event recently. An event that resulted in a all-hands-on-deck approach by not only city government but many of our partner agencies throughout the area to include utility providers, cable, internet, broadband providers, Lee County, the state of Florida, so on and so forth. It was the largest natural disaster that hit the city in the city's history, and it was significant in its impact. It affected every neighborhood of Cape Coral, every quadrant of the city, every aspect of the city's operation. It is a major event, and we are going to feel the effects of the storm, not for weeks to come, not for months to come, but for years to come. So I'd like for Chief Ryan Lamb to come to the podium and help share some information that many of the individuals that are watching tonight or that are here in the room tonight may not have known about the incident and the city's response and our partner agency response. Because immediately after the storm, as you know, many of our residents and businesses were without power, were without internet, were without cell phones, and were without communication. And they really didn't know what was going on, what the city was doing, what LCEC was doing, and so on and so forth. And so staff's presentation is going to cover those aspects of the storm. And let me just say this, our efforts to ramp up for the possible effects of this storm started well before Tuesday morning. By Thursday and Friday afternoon, we were already meeting, some of us virtually in the EOC, to prepare our response in the event we were to be affected. And I'm happy to say that I will leave my congratulations and recognitions for later this evening. But I am very pleased to say that the city was well-prepared to respond and recover from it. So I now turn it over to Chief Lamb, who served as the incident commander for Hurricane Ian. Chief?
Mayor and Council, Ryan Lamb, Fire Chief, Emergency Management Director. I'd ask for some indulgence a little bit tonight as we work through some of this. We'd like to start out with a video that our great communications team has been gracious enough to put together, so we'll start there. Thank you.
This morning, our city manager declared a state of emergency for the city of Cape Coral, and evacuations have been issued for the residents of our community.
The city has an emergency operations plan, so I'm very confident in our staff that we are able to prepare and respond to this storm.
We've seen Ian strengthen overnight. Emergency services have been suspended. Hurricane Ian now a category four storm.
The eye of Ian went right over Cape Coral. They had wind gusts up to 140 miles per hour.
All of us here at the city of Cape Coral realize that the last 24 hours have been very difficult. We sustained significant damage to our infrastructure.
Continual police presence is ongoing and has been ongoing. As always, our officers are out working 24/7 now to provide top-flight professional police service.
Last evening at 11:00 PM, Public Works crews began clearing major roadways throughout the city. By 7:00 AM this morning, all roads, major roads in the city were clear of debris and were passable.
We're working on using every tool at our disposal to get messages out to our residents.
I want to commend staff, all of our first responders, and all the other organizations that have come to the city of Cape Coral to help us in our time of need.
District One was hit really hard, and we took the brunt of the storm. I arrived in 1960 of Hurricane Donna. We built this city from scratch, and we will do it again.
We have many people that are here to help us, and working together as a community, we will overcome this catastrophic event.
This storm wasn't something that we asked for, but it was something that unfortunately we're here to deal with and recover from. And as that last slide said, it's something we'll do together. I want to take a few minutes tonight and talk about the city's response. Tell a little bit of our story as we looked at this storm and how we were able to come together and work through the challenges that we had in front of us. But as the city manager mentioned, today doesn't end, isn't a finish line for us. It's a transition to full recovery. So city communications, as was mentioned, we tried every feasible means to get messages out to our community through press releases, social media, knowing that a lot of folks didn't have internet, opening up every fire station, City Hall, the police department as a way to pass out flyers for information. Not only doing regular media on television, but focusing an additional increase on radios because we continue to hear that people had radios, and that's where they were getting information. Our points of distribution, three of them that were set up across the city that were state and county run. This doesn't include the thousands of other individuals who were provided for by our non-governmental agencies, faith-based organizations, but 73,566 individuals, residents in our community, were served through these points of distribution for water, food, and other essentials. Knowing that a lot of people had mobility issues because their cars were possibly water damaged, we did supplies on the street or services on the street. These trucks with the fire department and code enforcement taking supplies directly to our residents, some of them focusing on where we received 3-1-1 calls for our residents. Working to set up two hygiene stations. I know personally, hearing stories of folks that showed up at some of these hygiene stations that had cooling, charging, restrooms, hot showers, and laundry services. A family, mother showing up with five children on the first day, saying it's the first time they were going to have an opportunity to bathe in eight days. We called in an army of assistance, in addition to National Guard and other partners that we called in. We had 16 mutual aid departments in for law enforcement, over 20 departments in for fire mutual aid support, and we had over 20 individuals come into our EOC after about two weeks of our staff running 24 hours nonstop to take over that service so we could continue to function. After we stopped emergency service at 8:11 AM and didn't begin responding again to emergency services till 11:00 PM, you can see we had 575 calls for law enforcement service pending and 329 calls for fire department service that were in holding. We had a lot of trucks and a lot of city vehicles out on the road. You can see this is a graph of city fuel usage for the weeks prior and an equal period after the storm. Again, we've had volunteer organizations, this isn't an all-inclusive list, but folks from all over the state and southeast region and the country coming into our community to help our residents. Team Rubicon, these folks are still here, and they're continuing to work. As of now, they've done 45 homes to get them contractor-ready so folks can be expedited in their recovery process. Our 3-1-1 call center, operating in the early parts 24 hours a day continuously, 5,462 calls for service. Everything imaginable, those folks were getting pressed with. These aren't folks that are 911 dispatchers or professionals. These are a lot of times either volunteers or employees that volunteered to come in and take on these additional responsibilities, or the folks that normally answer the 3-1 calls, but really taking a load and a burden off of our folks in the 911 center. For debris, and there's a lot more to talk about here later, but so far we've collected, as you see here, 357,000 cubic yards of debris. This breaks down into the CND, or the construction debris, and the vegetation, but you can see that our horticulture debris or the vegetation debris is almost seven years' worth of debris that we're trying to collect within the next, within 60 days essentially, and almost four and a half years of solid waste. Construction debris. In addition, human resources, we had 1,289 employees for the city, all hands-on-deck, come out and again assist our city in this recovery process. All while we had at least 19 employees with severely impacted homes that they had to be displaced while continuing to work to help our city recover. I have a few more folks that I want to just talk a little bit about, and again, I'd just ask for just a minute or two. Our Public Works Department, at 11 o'clock at night when the winds subsided and the bay doors at the fire station opened, and you could see the eerie quiet streets, power lines down, debris in the roadway, the first trucks out are the front-end loaders from Public Works going out to push the roadway so that the fire trucks and the cop cars can make it to the calls and holding that they needed to get to. We had folks working around the clock in different places. Our janitorial staff did a phenomenal job. In the video, you saw Mr. Eric Olive from our Public Works Department running through in his raincoat. I'd kind of say it looks like a cape, but mid-storm, while the winds are howling, to go out and make sure our generators are working and electronics are still moving as a city electrician. It was impressive to see him run around in his flip-flops in 140 mile-an-hour winds to make sure that the EOC and the police headquarters could still function, to have those folks in. Also need to brag a little bit about our Public Works Director, Mike I. Again, part of telling a little bit of our story, we were on a deadline to get water to the fire, to the hospital. We were trucking water into the hospital 3,000 gallons at a time, and they were using 5,000 gallons an hour. If we had a mechanical issue, flat tire, we were going to be in real big trouble. So we had a timeline to get water to the hospital. It was death by 1,000 paper cuts, right? There's cuts all over that process. We couldn't get pressure. And so developing a plan, they worked together with utilities and turned off every branch onto that main line, and basically we're going to make a one-way pipe directly to the hospital. I'll tell you, Mike I probably stayed up for three days straight, testing every fire hydrant along the way and working with the utilities crews. And you saw them at, you know, 3 o'clock in the morning out in front of the hospital, ripping out a back feeder, a check valve there so that we could get water pumped into the hospital and made it there with about two minutes to spare to keep that hospital when we knew that we were already down Galisano, Health Park, and Gulf Coast, to keep a hospital available in our community. In the fire department, again, to brag on my folks, but certainly waiting through water post-storm to go find house fires. We had a number of fires that happened during the storm, and we continued to run, we would run probably on average one structured fire, working fire a week. We run in three to four to five a day post-storm. The police department, you saw they were over 500 calls in waiting. The number of welfare checks were insurmountable, but they worked through it quickly. In addition to that, our dispatchers, you know, working up in the police department that dispatched for police and fire continuously answering 911 calls that were coming in and talk about a tough job, knowing that we couldn't go help some people during that time where we had to hold back because of the winds. And that, their job continues now, but obviously for a great period of time afterwards, you know, the dawning task of standing in the intersections and the heat and grinding through those, directing traffic for days on end. Our utility department, as I mentioned, insurmountable, water main breaks all over. Again, getting through that, processing that, and then the next step was working through the sewer issues. Again, the EOC wasn't immune from these. 100 people and four toilets, I'll leave it there, but we were right there with our residents and some of those difficulties and challenges. Our development services, we had our building inspectors and fire inspectors as well going out and checking our commercial businesses and making sure that they were ready and prepared to open back up. In addition to, once we knew the storm was impacting us, immediately Vince and his team started working on their emergency permitting process while the storm was still actively upon us. Also need to give a special recognition to one of our code officers, Ryan Kenny. As a code officer, I have a little bit of background about him because he started as a logistics person over at the fire department, but I knew what his background was in the Army in logistics, and we assigned him to be in charge of our entire local staging area over at Sunsplash. Millions of dollars of equipment, hundreds and hundreds of pieces of generators, cones, stoplights, all the stuff that came in there stepped way above his position as a code officer to really bring that position full circle for us. Parks and Rec, working with our volunteers and donations, making sure that was organized and focused where people had a place to go. I'd already mentioned our clerk's office and the 3-1-1 efforts that they worked through. Our CERT team, they did everything from deliver supplies around to different spots in the city, or to working on that SOS squad and everything in between, setting up cots, really any place we needed them, they truly stepped up for us again. Our IT department, just like other folks are dealing with now, we had internet outages and IT issues, and to have them there and help us prepare to recover and keep us operational there so we can still function and be the nerve center for the city. Our human resources department continued to work on employee resiliency and also worked with the employees who maybe weren't in an essential role but wanted to work, and we had positions that we needed to press them into. Our communications department, we've touched on about all the things that they did to help get messages out, and our financial services department were with us every step of the way to make sure that we did things correctly because as much as we're running to respond to that emergency that's right in front of us, we know that down in the long term financially is going to be a big burden for our city to make sure we do it smartly and that we can maximize our recovery process. I'd also be amiss if I didn't mention our assistant city manager, Ms. Connie, and Matt Grambo from the city manager's office, being our representatives over at Lee County EOC, being our eyes and ears over at the county and providing information back and advocating for the city. We also have our economic development folks, and we also have partners, Sharon, and we also have partners from the Chamber of Commerce, Donna Germaine, and Billy Johnson from the CCCIA, actively sitting in the EOC throughout the event to make sure, again, that recovery process starts even before impact. We have a number of contractors. Again, we called in an army of people from Series Tetra Tech and Hagerty to help us make sure that we're doing this as efficiently as we can, not only to get it done quickly, but make sure that we maximize our recovery process as well. And again, not, or sorry, mutual aid partners as well. Again, I can't sit here and name all of them because it literally was from about every county and city in the state of Florida that came in to render aid. Not blowing smoke at my boss, but certainly having him side-by-side with us throughout the duration of the event, providing guidance and wisdom and leadership through the process was truly helpful and something to be proud of there with our city manager. Mayor and council, I've talked to every one of you. I don't have any doubt in my mind that each one of you love our city, truly. You guys care for our residents, and you care about what's most important to seeing us, again, take care of those life safety issues, but then see us recover. I really appreciate that. The mayor, he and my wife now have something in common. They both don't like my snoring. Mayor slept in a cot in my office, so we certainly worked hand-in-hand in his leadership to help us push through when we hit roadblocks and working with some of our state partners. Mike G. Lombardo, Dane Eagle, Jimmy Patronas, and of course Governor DeSantis helping us with the information and getting supplies. The one day we were down at the yacht club, what do you guys need? Generators. And snap of a finger overnight, 44 of them showed up. Also, I can't not mention my emergency management staff. Again, this is what we planned for, this is what we drill for, this is what we prepare for, and I think it's a lot of those preparations that have allowed us to be, again, expeditious in getting as far into this recovery process as quickly as we can and being prepared as the city was. And lastly, our residents, as was mentioned, it's truly heartwarming to drive around the city and see neighbors being neighbors. Going out, especially when you don't have power, you don't have internet, helping your neighbor pick up their yard. I saw kids with power strips out on the curb with a generator saying free charging. Any of those things that, you know, individuals could do just to help someone they knew or somebody they didn't know in our community was truly, speaks to the spirit of Cape Coral. Obviously, this isn't a complete list, and there's many people and things that I've left off, but in the sake of brevity, again, it's something I truly am proud of our community. I always say, you know, there's no perfect incidences, and this one was not. We have things that we'll continue to learn from, but man, I'm real proud of our city as the emergency management director for the city. We really have a lot here to be proud of and be thankful for, but certainly it's not done. We've got a lot to continue to move forward on.
You mentioned it's not a complete list because you didn't name yourself. It's a man who wears two hats, or two helmets if you will. He's the fire chief, but also in times like this, the emergency director hat is very heavy, and we had a true leader in Chief Lamb.
And I just want to mention, as a member of Unified Command with Chief Lamb, he kept everybody in there focused, everybody on what needed to be done the day was happening. But not only that, he was 24 and 48 hours in advance of every step that needed to happen. His training and his ability to think through and be calm led the team, and I want to just say thank you, Ryan.
Thank you. Couple things that I'd like to touch on as we've mentioned, we're not done yet. So we can, I'd like to, Mr. City Manager, if it's all right, in order of five things to go over, debris, temporary housing, business and economic recovery, permitting, and finance. We're okay to proceed? Okay.
Mike?
Michael to come up. Let me just echo the comments that were made about Ryan Lamb's leadership during all of this. Always cool under pressure, never rattled. He acted like he's been through this 15 different times, knew exactly what to do. I think, I'm very proud of the work that he did to lead the organization as the incident commander, and I think I even joked with him, and I told him that I was bored during the whole event because there was nothing for me to do because he seemed to have everything under control. And in fact, because he did have everything under control, I spent very little time in EOC, and I got to go out, as did the mayor and many of you. We got to spend a lot of time out on the street and witness firsthand what all of our residents and businesses were going through. And again, that's because of the leadership that Chief Lamb provided during this event. Also, Mike Ilchizen and Chief Sizmore, Connie, Matt Grambo, we even had Matt out there with a wrench turning fire hydrants in the middle of the night to try to get water to the hospital. So we have about 1,289 employees that came to work during the event. I will tell you that all 1,289 of them are heroes. I wish I can thank all of them individually, but I can't. We'll be here a long time, but we'll have an opportunity to do that. And so again, I want to express my sincere gratitude on behalf of the city manager's office to the entire 1,289 employees that were there for us when we needed them. So thank you. Mike?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Ilchizen. I want to go over kind of a brief presentation on the debris removal, where we want to be, where we're striving to go, and how we are monitoring the progress throughout the way. So the way that debris lays out is essentially you have the declared state of emergency, which happened on 9/23. We issued a notice to proceed the Tetra Tech and Series on 9/27. Ian made landfall on the 28th. Public Works crews went out and did the first push clearing of the road, the major roadways so that the police and fire could do the urban search and rescue and respond to the immediate backlog of events. After that happened, on 9/30, our series group came in and they did a first push on the local roadway so that the debris cleanup and garbage collection could start. They performed an estimate of how much volume of debris was out there. Household garbage resumed on 10/10/3. We opened up our debris management sites on 10/4. On 10/5, we started collecting. On 10/6, the contractor began starting to ramp up the amount of collection trucks that they had. On 10/9, we hit 134 trucks. We were trying to get to basically 75. We hit that early, and then we hit our additional 120 ahead on 10/9. On 10, basically on 10/17, this Monday, we began collection, and then as of yesterday, we had 160 units in the city, removing around 39,000 cubic yards a day. Our goal to be complete with all of the removal is within the initial first 60 days. That is, will occur on 11/22. is, will occur on 11/22. So, the way the estimate breaks out is right now, we're looking at a million cubic yards of vegetative debris for construction and demolition. It's about 800,000 cubic yards. There is a conversion to tons, which we can then convert to basically how much we collect annually through our Waste Pro contract. As Ryan said in the earlier presentation, that is approximately seven years' worth of vegetation and four and a half years of construction or solid waste. If you were to picture just 1 million cubic yards of debris, that would fill a football field 510 feet high. And we have, as you said, 1.8 million. We put out a debris management plan. We're currently working the zones in, that are yellow. The blue zones will start on the second, once we get to basically next week. Every single day, actually every three minutes, we're notified where the trucks are. Those red dots and that hotspot on the left kind of shows us where the volume is being collected. There is a dashboard that lets us know what trucks, what vendors are picking up, what amount of volume, how many loads we've taken, what the cumulative amount of debris is collected. And then on the right-hand side, that's actually a live chart that shows us where they are throughout the day. And you can see that those, kind of those green dots and then those red heat map of where it's being picked up, basically aligns with what, where we see the yellow. And the blue, where we intend on going next, is where you see kind of holes in the map. So, we're published the plan, following the plan. The way it works is, we have a monitor, that is a monitoring firm, which is Tetra Tech. They basically staff up employees that will go around, one, basically each truck has a monitor with them. They document that the stuff is collected from the right-of-way, not from people's private property, not from commercial businesses. You can see a picture of them staffed up in the morning. Then there's a picture in the middle of them actually monitoring and collecting the data live as it's being collected. And then when it makes its way to the debris site, there's a monitor that looks inside the vehicle, puts a percentage on how full that vehicle is and documents the amount of cubic yards collected. And then all that data every night gets aggregated into the reports that we get. Same thing kind of happens with the contractors. Series is our contractor for the collection and hauling. They staff up in the morning, they go out, they run the collection sites. We are, we have, right now, four sites open. We have three vegetative sites and one C and D site, depending on what waste stream they pick up after they fill their truck. They leave the onsite monitor, go to the yard, get a ticket for how much stuff they've collected, and then that gets disposed of there so they can return back to work. The ultimate disposal process, we're going to do a series of things. For the vegetative side, we're going to be chipping and incinerating, and then ultimately, if it's not incinerated, we'll be hauled off for land application. On the C and D side, first it goes through a compaction or a reduction. There's a dozer that basically crushes it to reduce the volume, and then from there it will be hauled off to a landfill. So roughly, there's 1.8 million cubic yards out there that comes from a FEMA estimate that takes into account how much storm surge there were, what the wind was, what the value of the homes were, kind of an onsite evaluation. There's a, basically everybody across the nation uses the same thing. It spits out a number and that's what we basically target towards. To get where we need to be for 11/22, we need to be hitting about 30,000 cubic yards. Right now, their average, the hauling companies are averaging 39,000. And we are working with Tetra Tech to continue to find and develop additional performance measures. I'm going to show you one that we're using now to benchmark the process, but we're working with Tetra Tech on a couple of others. So this is kind of what we're using. If you were to just take that 1.8 million cubic yards and just straight line it out till basically day 60, they need to hit 30, 39,000 cubic yards a day. The last five-day average, they're averaging 40,000 cubic yards and on their highest day of collection, they were at 42,829. If you look at the chart, the blue line is the straight line where they need to be at. The bottom is the actual that is collected each day. So there's an initial ramp-up process where you see the line starting to kind of, you know, slope towards the blue line. Then there was a day there, on the 12th, we had a significant rain event. There was that evening where we basically had a three-inch rain event, it shut us down for a day. We had to fix the site, mulch the site, so we lost a little bit of ground there. But now they're basically trending with their target and a little bit above that. So, if they continue at the current pace, basically we're gaining like 1,000 cubic yards a day. Ultimately, at the end of the month, you know, we'll be back on target at their highest day, if they keep it at the highest average, you know, we basically have about a three or four-day buffer to be complete at the end of this process. However, there are a couple of things outside of their control that will help kind of spike the collection rate. We're working on opening a citizen drop-off for C and D. We have one open now for horticultural and vegetative debris. Once that happens, individuals that just have a fence or some shingles or something in their yard that they want to get rid of, they'll be able to take that themselves. And so what we'll see, we'll see a spike, kind of a pickup in the, in the cubic yards collected at that site from the resident drop-off as well as Waste Pro collection. So as we continue to move further down through this process, we'll open up additional waste streams and people will start having the, they'll start putting stuff in their cans if it's small enough. So as you get towards the end of this process, you know, those two things will help kind of, help us cross that blue line and be into the positive side. But this is what we use and what are we're using to track daily progress towards our goal. In addition to performance measures, we benchmark. So those two things bring us confidence that we can do what we, what we're targeting and whether or not we're ahead or behind our peers. So in Lee County, they have about 4 million cubic yards estimated. They're running 205 trucks a day and they've collected about 675,000 cubic yards. Charlotte County has similar to us, 2 million cubic yards. They're, we don't have the truck, that truck count that they're running, but they've collected about 397. And this is county-wide for the counties. So if you compare that to us in the city, we have about 160 trucks and we've, today we eclipsed 400,000 cubic yards. So we're running on par or better with Charlotte County and, and at pace with Lee County just for the city alone. And that gives us good confidence that, you know, our crews are doing what we need them to be doing to get this stuff up in a timely fashion. With that, I'll open it up to any questions or comments on the process.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mike, for this information. I remember when we had Irma and I remember the big pile of stuff on Skyline and it's, it's now all vegetative debris, so that's great. I just was wondering, were you able to compare this to the Irma? Because I know this is much more significant than what we had with Irma, but I think it's important for residents to see how quickly we're moving this time around. I know in 2017, it didn't move quite as quickly, so I was just wondering if you had any, you know, cubic yards or pounds moved, for example, with Irma versus Ian.
I don't have the specifics on, from the date of starting collection to now, but what I can tell you just globally is, in Irma, we didn't have anybody for over a month even, starting the collection process. So from a, from a go-time, from when we hit the ground, basically within seven days after the storm, starting to pick up stuff with the debris sites open, we are at least three to four weeks ahead of where we were in Irma. But also on the volume of trucks, on the magnitude of the, of the collection rate, I'll say, far exceeds even where we were at in Irma. So, our contractors, both Series and Tetra Tech, you know, we, we kind of pushed them in the beginning, you know, they gave, they had a rollout schedule to have 50 trucks and 100 trucks, and we kind of said, we need you to be at 75 and 125. And, you know, they were at 160 before we knew it. So they've, they've been able to, to kind of hear what our needs are in the community and have, you know, I'll just say they're hitting it out of the park compared to Irma.
And I also think it's important to point out, in 2017, we had many storms. And I know that we had contractors from all over the country going to Houston for Harvey and then we had Irma and then I think there was another storm. So I think that's important not to say that, you know, wow, this, this, you know, we're getting all the attention because we were, we were so badly hit with this one storm, but I think it's important to point out, you know, that they were able to focus on us, which I think is great. And then also, I think it's important to point out for the residents, that you all had this teed up prior to the storm. I mean, you had these contractors ready to go prior to the storm, standing by. I mean, I know just from, I think, taking naps in your office two days after, you know, talking to our solid waste gentleman, staff member, you know, he was just telling me, I mean, I was just really impressed. So I think it's important to point that out.
Yeah, I, you know, I apologize. I should say that Terry Schweitzer, our solid waste manager, I know he's here today, has done an outstanding job with all of this. Terry, can you come up?
Terry, you rock. You did a great job. You did. That was incredible. And I was just fascinated hearing about all that, how you had teed it all up prior to the storm. And I think it's important for residents to know. I'll save the rest of my comments for everyone else during council member comments, but thank you, Mike. Thank you for this detailed presentation and it's helpful when we get residents reaching out, calling us to be able to refer back to this presentation and, and let folks know, you know, how quickly it's moving. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Tate.
Thank you, Mike, for all your hard work. I heard all about it and I'm just so thankful that you were on our team. Can you go back to this slide for the yacht club area for the furniture and appliance So we're in the yellow, so like E, when does that exactly think that they're going to be picking that up? Because those streets are really narrow and we're loaded with everything down there.
So, so those are zones 1, 9, and 6, and then those, each of those zones are broken down into an alpha, beta, charlie, delta. So each of those, every one of those zones that are in yellow right now has at least one contractor, many of them especially down in that south area, specifically in the area of Bay Shore, Coral Point, Eldorado, Coronado. We're over 12 in that area, up and down all those streets right now.
Okay. We still need to go up and down a few more times.
Yeah. So what's, what, you know, the volume of stuff there, we were, we were with the monitors yesterday and did a couple of media interviews, Terry did. Essentially, those trucks, even the double barrels, the ones that have the truck and the trailer, they're basically getting like six houses. They're getting three on each side and three on, so after they've done basically three on a street, they're having to leave and go to, go to basically offload that.
And I think that's what we're seeing is, in our neighborhood, is, is we just don't see it quick enough, but then we understand that there's so much debris out there. So in the next week, we should start to see a little bit more relief.
Yeah, you should see it now. We, like, we were down there, like I said yesterday, there was over a dozen there. I, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I believe also as other areas free up, so if, for example, up in the north, the one way up at 7C that's yellow, when they go over to the blue, once they're done, then, and if there is no C and D, then they'll start relocating trucks to get more collection done faster. So as stuff gets cleared, as zones get cleared, then it starts doubling up and tripling up and so that, when you get to the end, you really start escalating the pickup rate.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, first I just want to commend you and your team on this. You know, seeing firsthand the logistics involved in this, I know more in the last two weeks learned, I've learned about debris removal than I ever thought I would and, and what goes into it is incredible and what you guys have been able to do is just, is fascinating. Do we have an update on, I know the city manager and myself had discussions today and I'm not sure whether this is the time to, to bring this up, an update on the canal debris removal?
Yeah. So what we've been, so in Irma, the city of Cape Coral picked up the canals under our own jurisdiction and we used our debris management contractor to pick them up. This storm, we've gotten some, not mixed messaging, but we've got, we were, we have been advised that the state was intending on covering the waterways. So, we've been advised that FWC was going to take care of the vessels and the debris. We think that message is shifting and we're trying to get written guidance from them, the Department of Emergency Management and the DEP, on whether or not they're going to do in addition to the vessels. So if, if you've been around, I sent a picture two days ago to our team that's doing debris and, and kind of monitoring this. FWC has already been out and has active, started to actively tag the vessels with the notice that this vessel is derelict or has been, you know, off station. It's now posted as a 45-day, it's a big yellow placard, you have 45 days to remove it. If not, we're going to be hauling it out of the water. So that, we know for sure FWC is taking the vessels. What we don't know is the trees that are down, any errant debris that's in there, docks, wood, garbage, people's roofs, lanis, you know, screen enclosures. In the past, we've done that. We're, we're waiting for written guidance on whether or not that is going to be our mission. And if it is, our debris contractor that is doing the stuff in the right-of-way will be able, is basically on standby, ready to go with that as well.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's, it's, it's confusing now. I mean, I spoke with Representative G. Lombardo and he, of course, had indicated in one way that, that we were going to be responsible for the debris cleanup here, with the exception of the boats. And then we're hearing from other individuals at the state that that might not be the case. So, my concern here is the timeline that we have to abide by in order to get the full reimbursement from FEMA. So, I'm glad to hear that. I guess we've been requesting from state officials.
Yeah, so we, we have representatives here that Fire Chief Lamb mentioned with Hagerty. They have said, sent written documentation numerous times, you know, requesting this guidance so that we can have that thing to lean back on. Because the last thing we want to do is start the process and then find out somebody else is supposed to be doing it, or we weren't approved to do it and then we don't get reimbursed for it. The timeline, we're all, we all, we all have that date in our head, 11/22, that's the original, you know, the 30 plus 30. There are some communities like Sanibel, there's some islands that haven't even started debris management yet. I do know that there, there was some discussion at the county, they're going to continue to request for an additional 30, you know, they're trying to allay anybody's fears that, you know, this is all going to fall on the municipalities or the county to fund. So they are pushing for an additional 30-day extension. We don't know if that's going to happen, so our plan with Series is to, is to hit that mark in the first 60 days.
Awesome. Thanks for the update.
I got a couple of comments I want to make. First off, as Chief Lamb said, you know, when I was taking the oath of office, I must have missed in the small print that I was going to have to sleep with the city manager, the police chief, the fire chief. But we got through it. I will tell you that, you know, it was an honor to, to work with every, everyone at the EOC Center and all the staff, the 1,289 men and women that were out there. I showed up on Tuesday morning and, and I was there for the duration for many days and worked beside each and every one of you. Mr. City Manager and the whole team. The fire chief did an exceptional job, like the city manager, he was calm and cool and, and like he said, you know, looked like he had done this many times. And just like all of our other team members there, the police chief, yourself, Mike, and everyone that worked under each and every one of you, I want to thank our team for coming together. I, myself, just like many of you in that room, we had to call family and friends just to see how our house, our own house, made out. Some of us fared out fairly well, some of us did not, but we stayed the course. We made sure that we were there to get the work done for our community. So it was honored to serve with each and every one of you along the way. And, you know, I couldn't, couldn't imagine not having the team together that we did. Everyone was prepared. Like you said, that you started this, this task probably Thursday or Friday before this team already hit. So because of the planning, the coordination, up to this point is why things happened the way they did after this storm had hit. And I went out during the first push as well with the police chief, I'm sorry, with the fire chief and with the city manager. And when you got to Cape Coral Parkway at about And when you got to Cape Coral Parkway at about midnight and there was three foot of water running down the road and the vehicle that we were in wasn't able to go through that water, we knew everything south of that, how catastrophic that it was going to be. Or when we went down the roads that were east of Del Prado towards the river and we could only get about 100 yards off of Del Prado, when the vehicle, the water was so high that we couldn't go down them roads, we knew that the severity of the storm. And, you know, coming together as a community, you know, one thing I'll say that I was so honored to see is how our community came together, not only for our staff, but all of the volunteers that we had, all the organization. We had thousands of people come to our community to help us. And, you know, that was very touching to see, you know. And there's a lot of residents in our community still today that need that help. We're in the recovery phase. I know that we'll move forward, we'll help, we'll get FEMA more involved and we'll make sure that we, we find the answers to the residents. I, I was talking to a resident last night that her, her husband and her two kids are still living in a house that flooded, that had about three foot of water in the house. The mold is growing on the walls and they can still see it. And they're still living in that house because they don't have any temporary housing. So we have to make sure that we address this, not only with our state, but our, our federal representatives as well, because we got to make sure that we find a place for these people temporarily. I, I realize that that's going to be a challenge, but I know that we will. So again, I just wanted to thank the community for pulling together, all the different organizations, all the different mutual aid, whether it was police or fire that came, came to help us. They lined up person after person, truck after truck to help us and we thank them for that help. We know we have a long road of recovery, but I think we're up for that challenge. And I think that's what we're, our priorities are now moving forward, is to make sure that the residents that are displaced, that we can be there to help them, whether it's with their permitting needs, the inspections, finding temporary housing, whatever those needs are. And along the way, we'll get this debris picked up. You know, I, I went through houses down in the southern part of the Cape, people crying, lost everything that they owned. Councilmember Tate is one of those individuals. But I, I met many of those individuals and I walked through the house, you know, they're devastated, they have nothing. So I want to ask our residents, as much as we wish we could snap a finger and have that debris picked up off the yards, you know, we have to think about those residents that lost everything. And, you know, we have to put it in some type of context because I was very fortunate. I only had landscaping, damage to my home, little, a few roof tiles, but I was extremely lucky. Some people can't say that. And then some people throughout our, our region here in southwest Florida, they weren't that lucky. They died in this event. So this was a catastrophic event. I know this region will rebuild. It will take time. Like the city manager said, this won't be weeks, this won't be months, this will be years to, to overcome this almost category five storm. So thanks again to everyone on the staff, thanks to our community for pulling together. We'll get through it and we'll be better than we were before. It's just going to take some time to do that. So thank you to everybody. Mr. City Manager, thank you to, to you. I was there, worked side by side with you along the way. I thank you for your leadership and thank you for being there. Again, like the city manager and the EOC, it was, it was performing. We didn't need to be there as much sometimes during the day, so it gave us the opportunity to really get out and assess the city firsthand. And I think that helped, helped us make decisions, helped you make decisions on exactly what the community needed as well. So thank you. Any other comments?
And Mr. Mayor, if I can, I would also like to thank you for your leadership and thank all the members of City Council for its leadership. You know, there's, in many communities, when they are faced with this type of event, there's always the potential for unintended interference, right? Everybody wants to do, wants to help out, but sometimes you can get in the way. And I will tell you that this City Council knew its role, knew that your role was helping to communicate with the residents of the city and also to help us, as Ryan mentioned earlier, to, to kind of deal with these roadblocks at the elected level. And the mayor spent a lot of time directly interfacing with his counterparts at the county, with the governor's office, the governor himself, our representatives in, in the, in the state legislature. That allowed us to focus on what we do best and that is getting to the nuts and bolts of the operations. And so for me, it was, it was a godsend that I did not have to deal with egos and interference and, and, and people giving mixed messages to our staff. Our staff was able to concentrate on the task that was before us. So thank all of you and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your leadership. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Shepard.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief. Me too. I would like to thank all the city employees, everyone was phenomenal, all the citizens in our city, the local businesses, the churches, everyone coming together and helping each other. You know, was the one good thing that we got out of this horrible storm was the love and kindness that everybody shared, but helping each other. It really was a feel-good to see everyone working with each other to help their, their neighbors and friends. And for the, some of the citizens that are watching, we literally had city employees that didn't return home for days, not even knowing what their own home looked like, that were concentrating on you, the, the people of the city, making sure that your services and your, your life conditions were improved. Also, I would like to bring up our local hospital. I know for a fact that the staff at our hospital, nurses, doctors, and all the other employees that it takes to run our hospital, a lot of them didn't even leave the hospital for the first five days. They stayed there to take care of our family and friends that, that they need to take care of in the hospital. So these people are to be commended to. But, but like I said, that the, the golden lining of this whole thing was the love and kindness that all these people, all of us, how everybody pulled together and helped each other. And it was very good feeling to, to see that, that, that side of the store, of, of all the goodness that came out of it. But there's a long road ahead of us, there's a lot to do. For the citizens that are getting frustrated, it, it's a lot more than just your street. It's, it's intense. And if you, it'll, it's going to take time and we'll get to you and, and we have all the right people working on it and they're all doing a fabulous job. And just thank everyone again, thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Emergency management doesn't end with, you know, with the immediate response. We're, we're through this through the full recovery process. So coordinating that recovery effort, it was going to be Alvin Henderson, our Emergency Management Division Manager. And we have some updates for you on some of the recovery things that you've talked about, if you'd like. We can give you a brief update on a couple of those key areas.
Sure.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Since the time that we locked in at the Emergency Operations Center preparing for the hurricane, we had our contracted consultant in the Emergency Operations Center with us, Hagerty Consulting. Currently, we've been working in essence on two buckets, mainly the Public Assistance Program from FEMA that is focusing on our efforts with debris clearing, the costs associated with that, as well as all the protective measures that we did before, during, and right after the storm as well. As we start to move into what we call now the recovery phase of the hurricane, we are also now focusing on the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Individual Assistance Program that starts to look at temporary housing. We know that's the next hot issue that our residents are facing within our community. I want to introduce and call up to the podium to the rock stars, if you will, of Hagerty Consulting that have been working with us. Shirley Valentin, she is the Senior Managing Associate of the Recovery Division for Hagerty. And we're also fortunate now to have joining us Ari Ranone, who's the Deputy Director of the Recovery Division for Hagerty Consulting. So Shirley, if you would, she'll give a update on what has been initiated already under FEMA's Individual Assistance Program and an outlook on what may also become available to our residents as we move through the recovery process. Thank you.
Good evening, Shirley Valentin.
Ari Ranone, thank you for having us.
We wanted to give you an update on the federal assistance programs that are currently available to the citizens. As of now, there are four programs that have been activated. Three of those are under FEMA and one of them is under the Small Business Administration. The three programs that are active under FEMA Individual Assistance are the Transitional Sheltering Assistance. This is, the assistance provided by FEMA is related to placing eligible survivors into hotels. This program lasts up until 180 days and it revises eligibility every 14 days. The second program under the FEMA Individual Assistance that is active is the Rental Assistance Program. This is, this lasts up to, up until 18 months and it's for owners and renters that have suffered damage in their primary residence. And it is revised every two months in terms of eligibility. The third program under FEMA's Individual Assistance is the Home Repair or Replacement Program. And this has a maximum of assistance that is up to $37,900 for each applicant. And the last program that is active is the Small Business Administration Disaster Home Loans. These are loans that are given to the applicant and owner can apply for up to $200,000 to replace or repair their primary residence. If there's a renter, they are able to apply to, but only up to $40,000.
And these four programs, we'd like to just say, they're run by FEMA, sorry, three by FEMA, one by the SBA, but they're for the residents to apply for directly. The city can communicate to the residents and survivors that they're available, but it's something that community members affected by the storm will have to directly apply for, all four of these programs.
A couple of quick questions. Did you say the SBA applicant, if it was a homeowner, was $200,000?
That's correct.
And $40,000 for a renter?
Correct.
And as far as the FEMA program for Home Repair and Replacement Program, I thought I'd heard you mention $37,900?
Correct.
And if I'm not mistaken, is that $37,900? Is that structure? And then is there another $37,900 for content? Or is it just a straight $37,900?
It's $37,000 for the structural repairs and that's to not replace exactly what was there before, but to get a home in habitable condition.
Is there anything for contents?
Not through the FEMA program, but through the SBA, there's up to $40,000 for a loan. That's, that's a loan program. All of those come after a resident would apply for insurance and get any proceeds they, they have through their homeowner's insurance or flood insurance.
And would it be, you know, I know we were trying to get a disaster recovery center here in Cape Coral, but I know there is one over in Fort Myers. We've talked about some mobile DC, the, yeah, the disaster recovery center, some mobile units. Can you give us any, or maybe Alvin, can you give us any type of update on that? Because I think it's important, you know, to either our residents to know they want to go to that disaster recovery center in Fort Myers, I believe it's on Bass Road, is that correct?
And as far as what we're looking at currently for the city, we'll have what they call EMRIC. It's a mobile registration center that is coming hopefully later this week, at the latest early next week. We have a couple of sites identified within the city and we've kind of broken it up, north, central, and southern location. The first part of this will be for people to be able to go in and register with FEMA. And then also, if they have not been able to register online using disasterassistance.gov, that assistance will be made available to them in those mobile units. And then as we move forward, probably at least two weeks out before we could see a mobile disaster recovery center coming in, as they start to become available from other locations, they'll be moving into our Lee County. We have identified five different locations for mobile DRCs to be set up, again, spread out throughout the city. That's where the wraparound services then come. So the first part obviously is that registration portion of it. And then as you start getting information back, a resident might receive money, or, I'm sorry, notification that they've been denied coverage. And it could be simple, you know, error on address or somebody else might have used their address by mistake. The FEMA personnel within those mobile units, the mobile DRCs will be able to work through those issues and correct it and get it moving forward for our residents. So that's the process that we're looking at. We did not want to wait two weeks before we started making services available. So that's why the decision was made to bring in the mobile registration units first and start that process and then be able to expand upon that once the resources become available from FEMA.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure it's clear too, because I know about two days, about two days after the storm, I spoke with the FEMA liaison that came to the LEOC and one of the first things that I had asked for was try to get a disaster recovery center here in Cape Coral. So that was like on day two after the storm. But we're still working through that process. So I want to make sure that the residents know this is something that FEMA needs to approve and establish. Like I said, I know I've been requesting it. I know we've put in missions to have that particular facility here, but, you know, there is a process. But I would recommend to our residents to definitely visit the disaster recovery center that's established in Fort Myers, because there they'll get the information, what they can apply for and how to do it, the forms, the applications. So it's, it's so critical because a lot of these programs are time sensitive, as you had mentioned. And so what I don't want to happen is that our residents, they don't meet the deadlines on some of these programs because some of them are very time sensitive. So if you haven't applied online or if you want to get better answers, I would strongly suggest that our residents take a trip to the disaster recovery center in Fort Myers to get the information and apply and get the, get the applications that they, that they need. With that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Tate.
Thank you. And I know you've been asking for the disaster recovery units. What I don't understand is why we don't have the services. Everybody is saying you can go to Fort Myers, you can go to Fort Myers. It's a long way to Fort Myers. If you live in North Cape and you're going to Bass Road, that's an hour trip. And we've been hit, I, I don't think people realize how hard Cape Coral was hit. And we seem to be the stepchild. I know that Fort Myers Beach and, and Sanibel and everybody were really hit, but we need services here. And so when you tell our residents to go to Fort Myers and stand in line for four hours and go to, to, to apply for a program, it's a real challenge. First of all, getting there, they've got, you know, kids weren't even in school. So when will we be able, I mean, you said next week or maybe this week. When is that office going to be available to our residents?
What has occurred today is FEMA has been onsite in the city reviewing the sites that we recommended for them. They have to review site capabilities for the mobile units. They also look at access, making sure that people can come in safely, there's parking, those types of items that they're required to do as part of this program. You know, the other process of it is also there's only limited resources available through FEMA. So part of what we do in So part of what we do in the city as far as our recommendations go up through the Lee County Emergency Operations Center, they then look at the Lee County as a whole and how these limited resources could best serve the entire community. So as those resources start coming in, that's how they start to look at it.
Congressman Tate, if I can jump in. We're frustrated, to be frank.
Good.
We have been jumping up and down and asking for this since day two or three.
I know he, I know the mayor has, and, and I think that's what's so frustrating, is you hear his story about the woman and the children. There is about 100 of those stories. And for FEMA to not respond is just not acceptable to me, because they're responding throughout Lee County. So I appreciate you all doing what you're doing to push, and I hope they're listening to what we're saying.
And we've, we've tried to work through, we thought we were really close on a site. They're trying to balance out early voting and some of these other things that they've got coming up. And to be honest, especially looking at large public facilities, Cape Coral doesn't really have very, very many.
I know.
And the ones that we do have got hurt. And so it's, it's, it's become a challenge and this is where we thought we would make good progress with these mobiles and it just seems like the key, the finish line keeps getting moved on us. So it's something that we're taking a very stiff line on and having these intense conversations with the county on.
Okay, I appreciate that. And for the FEMA people that were just speaking, I mean disasters.gov, if you don't have internet, you can't go to disaster.gov. So it's been a real challenge for our residents. So anything that you all can do, I appreciate. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like to also mention, well, two things. Number one, I've, I've reached out to Congressman Byron Donalds.
I know you have.
To see if he can help on his end. And also I know today Chief Lamb, I think, is setting a meeting up with FEMA representative, a new FEMA representative with myself and the city manager here coming up. So hopefully, you know, we'll find some more answers.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. I know that you're working hard and I appreciate all of the help that you're getting. I just, we want to just keep pushing.
Yeah, I think.
What we do best.
Yeah, I think, you know, if we had our preference, we'd snap our fingers and they'd be here.
Yeah. Well, don't forget Cape Christian, we have a big church. We have a big parking lot you could sit up there. I'll ask Cory.
Yep. Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Alvin, can I actually get Shirley back up here? I'm told that she might be able to provide me an update on what's been requested from the state with regards to the canal cleanup and where we're at with that process. I'm trying to sort through some of the confusion here.
So the guidance that has been requested has been to both FEMA and FDM and also FDEP. We're asking for guidance regarding permits, if applicable, that will be needed to be secure prior to performing any debris removal activity on the waterways. And also we are seeking guidance on who has legal responsibility to remove debris from the waterways.
Now, has that specific, has that been included as a mission in, in Web EOC or?
Not. It has been directly sent via email to FDM and we are working on a new request to send directly to FDEP.
Okay, I'm told that if we have it as a mission in Web EOC from our local delegation, that we might be able to get a little bit more traction on getting that guidance that we're requesting. So again, I'm just trying to expedite this process so we don't get caught at the end running out of time. So thank you for the update. Ryan, Chief, I'm sorry.
Sorry, let me jump in on that one again. So for debris removal, we don't put in a mission request here locally because we work with CERES. And so this is where, you know, we're trying to, the rules change a little bit every time. When we did it during Irma, this is the process that we, we went through. So we've put in a mission request. We're trying to get that walked through the county and the state to get an approved number. If that's what it's going to take to get it done, then that's, you know, we've already got that in and in process. But certainly, you know, we, we want to get the waterways cleared. We really want to make sure we get the financial recovery.
No, absolutely. No, I just want to get it clarified. Can you give me that mission number then, Chief, if you've got that?
I don't know if it's been approved yet. We do not have the mission number as of yet. So once we put the actual verbiage that they need from DEP and FDM, that will go into Web EOC and then be issued a state mission number. So the, the important part first is getting the, the mission details very accurately described so that then can go into Web EOC. And then it's a fast push through Lee County Emergency Operations Center to the State Emergency Operations Center. So what we're trying to do at this point is guarantee that mission verbiage is correct by talking directly to Florida Division Emergency Management and DEP as well.
So that, so we need their verbiage in order to put their mission in, but they're telling us that we need the mission in in order to be able for them to provide us that guidance. That's what, that's what our local representative is telling me that is needing to be done. So that's where I'm confused.
Okay, so.
No, that's not you guys' issue.
Right, right. For us to expedite the process, it's all in, the devil is in the details, right?
Right.
It's in that mission statement that we get, that we need that directly from DEP with certain language to make sure then that it, that request gets expedited through the process.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I will tell you also, I spoke, spoke with Mike G. Libardo yesterday and today on this topic. And apparently he had reached out to the Deputy Secretary of DEP and they said that, you know, they'll give us the green light. I understand what you're saying, because a lot of the details that you are describing is to make sure we get reimbursed for the expense of actually doing the cleanup. So I understand that. But as far as DEP is concerned, the message that I got was they're ready to give us the green light. We just got to figure out how we're going to get this green light.
So if, if they want a Web EOC mission number, it'll be in tonight. As soon as we get it, we'll let you know.
Yep, thank you. Any, she had mentioned.
Any update on the seawalls? Like, are we going to have to go through Army Corps, like although the seawalls on Yacht Club and Spaghetti Point along the river, all those are, you know, do we have to wait for Army Corps permits? Are we going to have delays? The houses are getting a little concerned over there.
Let Mike, I can field this one.
Sorry, Mike. I know you're tired.
No, go ahead. So what was your specific question again?
Well, on all the seawalls, let's just take from Bay Shore to Spaghetti Point. If you just look all the way down there, every one of those river fronts need seawalls. Are we going to have, they need captain's seawalls, you know, river fronts. Are we going to have to go through Army Corps and wait for the delays and all of that to get those repairs? Because homes are starting to be concerned about how much erosion is happening. And I know that the city manager had said, y'all are going to do a boat ride by or something to identify all the damage.
Yeah, and so in the past, after Irma, what we did was we used the Cape Coral Police Department Marine Volunteer Unit to basically drive up and down the canals, develop the list of some 200-plus seawalls that were damaged. Then we worked with those homeowners to find a means for them to, to repair their seawalls. Many of them, you know, you, as you may or may not recall.
I remember.
For the community's awareness, a seawall is a piece of private property.
Of a property.
Similar to a shed or a fence. So it's, it's on the private property owner to repair that. And we found out in Irma that, well-known to the insurance industry, but not to many of our residents, that seawalls are an uninsurable asset. So basically, they were having to take out home equity lines or cash in savings accounts to, to fix their seawalls. I haven't, we did have one of the generals from the Army Corps of Engineers here with us that's, and we did ask him directly about mangroves. You know, if we had to clear mangroves to create temporary boat docks and lifts, he said that they would be moving some physical, you know, some bureaucratic barriers for permitting. We didn't specifically ask them about seawalls. I can follow up tomorrow with a specific email to them to see if there has been, under the emergency declaration, any expedited permitting process at the federal level like we do at the local level.
I think that would be great.
So we'll put that specific request into them. I'm not aware of anything that has waived those requirements at this time, but we'll get, similar to like with the, the removal of the canals, we'll see if we can get a specific response from them on whether or not there, there's an expedited process.
Yeah, I know everyone understands it's their, it's their responsibility. I think what they're hoping for is that there's no red tape waiting, because if you're waiting for a seawall now, it's a year. So we can't wait that long for these.
Yeah, I was somewhat saying that for, I don't, there may be people in the audience who, who don't know this yet. So I was just trying to provide some education.
Right, right.
But yeah, we'll, we'll check on the, the permitting process and I'm hopeful that they're able to be as flexible as we are during state of emergency.
The other good information that we may be able to get to see if seawalls would be covered under a SBA-type loan, because I know they're low-interest loans, so that would be some good information to have as well, to see if seawalls would qualify under the SBA. You don't have to tell me now, but you know, maybe if we could get that information and if that is the case, we could try to get that, that out to the public as well. Any other comments? Mr. City Manager?
No, Mr. Bradley, we have two, one person on the table.
Yes, we have the two people. Once we're, are you all done?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks staff for the, for the update regarding the hurricane. And I'm sure we'll have several more of these throughout our regular meetings regarding debris and, I'm sorry?
Ryan, we have one more person.
Did you have one more person, Chief, or were you done?
We could be here all night talking about this. We do have other folks. If you want to hear anything about emergency permitting, business recovery and financially how we're setting, if you want to hear those things, I've got folks lined up if you're, if we're ready to move on.
I, I think that, I'm sorry, I, I thought you were done, but I think it would be good for the community to hear about the emergency permitting process and how we're doing that. I think that's some vital information we need to get out there.
Yes, sir. Vince?
The slide put up shows the emergency permits through the close of business yesterday. We receive numbers every day. We have two offices open, of course, City Hall downstairs and at the Art Center. The Art Center opened Friday morning, so the, the numbers there are reflective of the morning, the morning of the 14th through the close of business yesterday. The offices are open seven to six, Monday through Friday, and seven to three on Saturdays. You can see the number of permits there and of course, the large majority is at City Hall. We expect the number at the Art Center to increase as more and more people are able to work with their adjusters and insurance agents and we start having more permits come in, where people are going to be dealing with structural damage repair. The heaviest were very predictable at this point, roofs and electric. The electric are for a variety of things in, in the home there. It's after the emergency hookup. We worked on a program for that really during the event with emergency notification to us and worked with LCEC through some issues there. The inspection number, I actually received better numbers today. It's 524. The slide says 355, but as of close of business last night, it was 524. The, the system consists of people being able to apply in three different categories, minor, major and substantial damage. I can tell you through business yesterday, only four plans or permits were actually sent back for a plans examiner to have eyes, which is what we expected. It actually was a little bit better than I expected. I thought we would have more that would go back. So the way we set up the system, worked, is working. I'm very happy with that. So what I'm telling you is that all but four of those permits actually had to have another set of eyes put on it by a plans examiner and the others were issued immediately over the counter. So that's what we intended to do. The minor damage permit, which is Class A, the council may recall at your special meeting that you had a few days after the hurricane, is not limited to $20,000 or less, but that's, it's a guidepost really for the staff at the front counter and also for our plans examiners. And the major damages necessarily just over $20,000, it could be higher. Substantial damage requires a, a plan review and work that would, would have to be reviewed. We wouldn't be able to issue it over the counter. We expect that that will come later. And as you've heard from many speakers tonight, we'll be in this for quite a while and that will be the recovery role that my department will play a major role in, and, and that is the emergency permits. We are working on a new module for EnterGov to get these into the system as soon as possible. Right now, we're handling the paper. That is actually going better than I thought. We wrote this during the event, the emergency system, and it was modeled after several systems that I, I worked with in other communities where, where I worked for local government in Collier County and the city of Marco Island. So that's where we're headed with it right now. We have had 600 total customers come in through City Hall since we opened this procedure, which was the day after Columbus Day or actually, excuse me, yeah, the 11th was the day after, the 10th was Columbus Day. And 37 customers have come in at the Art Center. And again, we expect that number to increase. There are no fees for any of these permits and that will be through the duration unless we are notified differently by the city council based on a recommendation from Unified Command. That is the process right now and we're going to keep going with the process and hopefully make it electronic as, as soon as we possibly can.
And if I can, Mr. Mayor, just mention that throughout the entire storm, we called our employees back that were dedicated to, or tasked to work on the EnterGov upgrade. And we did not postpone any of our efforts to work on that. And so they came in, folks from IT, folks from Development Services, and they continued to work on that planned upgrade to get EnterGov back up and running like we committed to our development community that we were going to do that. And all reports so far that I've gotten is that the upgrade was successful. We are no longer having the system crashes and outages that we were experiencing prior to the upgrade. System availability and speed is, has been greatly improved. That's not to say that we're perfect. We still have some reconfiguration work to, to undertake as part of this effort. But again, I just wanted to drive home the point that we kept focused not only on the hurricane, but on making sure EnterGov works. And when we are ready to flip the switch with EnterGov and the hurricane permits, we know that it is, it's going to be there for the development community. Thank you.
Mr. Cetera, what's the timeline as far as when you think you'll have the emergency permits on EnterGov up and running? Do you have a, do you have an expectation on that?
My expectation is Monday, but I, I will have a better answer on that for you tomorrow or Friday at the latest. Amy Yearsley has been instrumental in working on that, our interim planning manager with members of Michelle Hoffman's team at ITS. But Amy had to leave town for a family emergency. She'll be out for a few days. I'm, I've been corresponding with her through email, text and phone, but I'll have a better answer by the end of the week.
And the reason that I asked that question, I know some of the contractors that come in, we limit, I believe, 10 permits per individual as far as walk-in paper permits. Once we get that component up and running, then those licensed contractors that are registered with EnterGov, they'll be able to do some of their permitting needs online then.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Chief Lamb, you got anything else?
I'm good if you guys are good.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, like the city manager had mentioned, I had invited a representative for Comcast to come into the meeting today. I thought it would be a good opportunity for Comcast to give us an update and for our residents as well. So I'd like to ask Jen Bennett?
Boyet.
Boyet? To come up and first tell us, you know, the company that you're with and your position and give us the update that I know many of our residents are looking for.
Sure thing. Thank you so much for having me. Everybody, I'm Jen Boyet. I'm External Affairs at Comcast covering Southwest Florida. Is that too close? Obviously, we did have extensive damage to our network, so especially around the coastline where everybody had the storm surge and we're talking, you know, Marco Island all the way up. So we've been working very hard to restore service everywhere. We have extra crew. We have over 1,700 crew. We have over 1,700 crew in the area. We've called in from 12 other states to help us get the services back up as soon as possible. So to date, our network and construction teams have replaced more than 16,000 drops. Drops are the lines that run individually to each house or business and more than 5,000 spans, and that's pole to pole. This is critical infrastructure for our network and that was obviously damaged to the hurricane. So it does take a little bit of time to restore all that. Over the past few days, we have made, we've been able to focus, we've been here the whole time fixing in Cape Coral as we go, but we've been able to focus more on Cape Coral in recent days because we have had the power backup and have had other things fall in line where we were able to go kind of full speed ahead, if you will, in Cape Coral and some of those affected areas. So I'd like to announce that today we have services restored to over 95% of residents and businesses in Cape Coral, which is a good number. We have crews going street to street and house to house, working to get those remaining customers back online, and that's obviously residences and businesses. So anybody that's still out, they had particularly major damage in their area and we are working as soon as we can to get those services back up. So as a result of our efforts, this, this past weekend and kind of going full speed ahead, we've cleared out a lot of outages in the area and restored another 11,000 customers between yesterday and today alone. For customers still without service, they can call 800 Xfinity, but we are obviously experiencing higher than normal call volume because of the hurricane impact of so many customers. They can also go online and, and check their services. I realize if they don't have services, they can't go online, but we've released a lot of blog posts, social media posts, press releases that detail the ways that people can get more help if they can't get through on the number. I would like to point out, someone mentioned Wi-Fi earlier. We do have a Wi-Fi truck available at the Walmart at 1619 Del Prado. People can go there to go online and, you know, check pay bills, whatnot. That truck can service over 1,000 people at a given time, so they can, they can go there to get online temporarily. If people notice that their neighbors are up, but they are not necessarily back yet, that could be that their individual box or cable modem was damaged and they can go to a store to switch out that particular equipment, or they can follow some of the tips and maybe just unplug it, plug it back in. Sometimes that reboots the box and they don't have to, to swap it out completely. As for the expansion project, we have completed phases one and two. We are still working on three, but I'd like to assure everybody that we do have separate crews for that. Crews are still separately working to finish the build-out project that we've been working on with Cape Coral this past year. So I don't have a timeline yet on that, if we were set back or not, but we'll be able to know pretty soon here in the next few days, so I can update you again on that. And I, I think that's about it. Questions?
Could you tell us how many total customers you have in Cape Coral? What I'm trying to figure out is the 5%, so I'm trying to figure out what that number might be.
I, I honestly don't, but I can get back to you with that.
Yeah, because I'd like to see maybe how many total customers so we can kind of get a good understanding of what that 5% really represents.
Okay.
Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you, Mayor. When do you anticipate getting to 100%? Do you have a goal in mind or a set date?
We do not, but we, again, we've made a lot of progress in the past few days. A lot of times, it's, it just depends on circumstances, so we don't like to give a timeline and not be able to meet it, but we are in good shape. Things are looking not as terrible as they were last week. So I, I should have better news for you in a few days with a decent timeline I can give you.
And the 5% that do not have power?
Yes.
I think, I think one of the things is we have to make sure that you know exactly who that individual is, the address. So what would your, what's your advice to those 5% of people? What should they be doing to help as well?
There's nothing really they can be doing. We do know who those customers are. We have, you know, monitors and things where we can see where our equipment is active or inactive. Again, our crews have been going street by street, door to door, checking down drops, checking the nodes, checking what's active and what's not. The only thing that we can ask them to do is sit tight and be patient. We know where they are and we just know they're frustrated, but we are getting there as soon as we can. Our crews are working around the clock.
Is that 5% in a geographic area in the city or is it spread?
It's kind of different pockets. Again, it's, it just depends on where, it's, it's just different pockets. It depends on the neighborhood and what happened in that particular area to our equipment.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. I appreciate you coming in today.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, we have someone, I believe by Teams from Century Link, so if we could maybe put that individual up?
Yeah, hopefully you can see me and I can see myself, which is disturbing, but you know, you can hear me as well.
Yes, sir.
In audio check at least.
Yep. Thank you for being here.
You bet, you bet. So my name is Martin Valance. I'm Vice President of Network Operations here at Lumen Technologies. A couple of things I might get set the stage here. One, my thoughts, prayers go out to you and the residents of Cape Coral needing to deal with such a tragic event, right? You know, I live in Florida, by the way, Orlando, you know, and having felt the back end of the storm, I can't relate to how serious a storm that was there in Cape Coral. You know, it can be frightening here in Orlando, but order of magnitude difference in terms of just impact personally and to the economy to the city. I appreciate Chief Lamb and his team, what they did in terms of restoration, you know, for the, you know, the citizens of Cape Coral. So amazing effort. Kudos to Chief and, and Mayor and the council members. Great job. I'm sure the, you know, citizens, you know, appreciate what you've done. Second, I want to make, make mention, so I am, I am a Lumen Technologies employee. You'll hear me talk about Lumen. We have two brands that are relevant here, Centralink brand and Lumen brand. And I don't want to confuse it, but I still got to set that context as you hear me talk, you know, you said, or as you, I said Centralink and Lumen, Centralink Quantum. Centralink, the brand, that is our legacy of DSL and voice services and Quantum is our fiber service to the home. You know, so both, I'll spend most of my time talking about the Centralink brand and the Quantum brand as it relates to residents there at Cape Coral. Third thing, then I'll kind of summarize some of what my colleague there at Comcast did. You know, what, what related to me when Chief Lamb was talking, you know, is, is the, the level of effort early on in the storm required a tremendous amount of support of our public safety agencies. And so, you know, a normal matter of recourse when we engage in, in storm recovery, you know, that Thursday, that Friday after the storm, that Saturday, that weekend, we are heavily focused on public safety agencies, critical care units like hospital, the Cape Coral Hospital, you know, wireless, because we know that public safety agents are dependent on wireless for communication, you know, and T S P services. So we are very, very involved in those same type of efforts to help that city of Cape Coral machine serve its residents early in the storm recovery, you know? And so I hope, you know, you all saw us rising to the occasion as we supported the chief and his, his staff and the city's efforts, you know, to quickly, you know, get organized and get, get prepared and serve the city, you know? So, so that was an early focus and I think, you know, in the end, you know, we're, I thought we did quite well, right? So let me talk a bit about the residents of Cape Coral and, you know, and where we are. So I'll kind of follow the footprint that my colleague offered, right? You know, and, and Mr. Mayor, you know, and some of your questions. So, you know, it turns up at the peak of the storm, you know, we, we registered about 22,000 residents impacted by the storm. Now, that could be for a lot of reasons, power predominantly, you know, but as you know, there's a lot of, a lot of network damaged, you know, by the storm. You know, today, so I, I give you two numbers, right? I can tell you from a network perspective, that is network where up to that last network element, you know, that's intelligent, you know, where, where greater, we're 98%, greater than 90%, right? Recovered. That's slightly misleading if you ask me, right? Because we have customers still impacted at the home, you know, it may be, you know, modem damage, home damage, access lines. It's not hard for you all to see. We have, you know, poles down, lines down to the home, you know? So to be frank, we've got about 6,600 customers, you know, that we can see from our networks that are still not authenticating to our network. So when I say not authenticating, we use, you know, internet services, it's kind of barometer of, you know, of just the customer base. And so when you think about, you know, that 16,000, I talked about it, peak at 22,000, it's about 71% of customers are using services, but there's about 30,600 who are still not authenticating for various reasons. About 3,000 of those customers we know about, right? We can see, you know, from various other vehicles, you know, you know, relative to our damage assessments in the field, you know, or customers calling in. We ask, we publish media statements, please call, you know, Centralink, you know, to report your conditions. If you're a Central customer, please call Quantum. If you're a Quantum, you know, customer, report your conditions so we can collect the data sets on those customers where the condition tends to be specific or local to the home. We have technicians available to help, you know, replace, you know, units, help with inside wiring, because, you know, we know a lot of these homes took some amount of, you know, of damage flooding and that could affect the inside wiring. Wires to the house, you know, the access line from the pole. Always good to help collect the data to help guide, you know, you know, you know, our restoration priorities. And so, so that said, you know, you know, I want to be clear, you know, we, we know we got a lot of customers that, that at that last mile, that point of entry to the home, you know, that are still impacted plus terminals. If you drive your neighborhoods, you see those big green boxes and, you know, alongside the road, those, those terminals. We've got a number of those remote terminals damaged due to the storm surge and are going to have to replace, you know, a lot of these cabinets. And so when we talk about the timeline, and so when I feeding the timeline, of course, you know, you know, the crew question came up, you know, I, I think our scale is a little bit less than Comcast, you know, we've got about 250 crew, you know, in, in the city, right? So I'm going to talk very, everything I've talked about is just the city of Cape Coral, nothing beyond that. So we've got about 250 folks, you know, walking all over, you know, Cape Coral, you know, in, in what we call distribution areas, you know, looking and doing the assessments and fixing, you know, as we recognize, you know, damage to aerial or, or terminals. That crew, you know, and the level of damage kind of creates a timeline. And so, you know, to be transparent, you know, customers will come up every week, but you know, the, the last customer, I, I think at risk of this restoration going into first quarter. You know, it's a tremendous amount of damage and you all can see, I mean, you know that, you've seen it, you reflected that in, in, you know, the, your statements tonight and Chief Lamb's statement tonight, you know, it's an amazing amount of damage. I've never seen it from a career perspective, you know, what that storm surge and that storm has done, you know, to the plant there in Cape Coral. We've got a lot of crews in place and, and we will continue to drive levels of restoration. But there's a last customer and, you know, there could, there's a risk it could go in the first quarter. So that said, you know, for those customers that don't have access, much like my colleague who has a Wi-Fi trailer, you know, we did put up a Wi-Fi, free Wi-Fi access point at 4001 Palm Tree Boulevard there on Cape Coral. We have others in the region, if you'd like that information, just the residents, you know, in case, you know, of need, have the opportunity to, to use free Wi-Fi, you know, for purposes, you know, relevant to them. We're here to serve the community, our commitments to Cape Coral and drive quick restoration as quickly as possible, because we know that internet services are quality of life, material, you know, item, as well as critical, right? There, there are folks who work from home and so for them, it's, it's economic, you know, a lot of reasons, right? Internet, you know, becomes a light bulb for many folks and it's not lost on, you know, the damage that this storm represents. And so we're very focused on continuing to just flow resources, material, you know, you know, into, you know, the city to continue the restoration process. So a little fast, I know we're a little long, so I wanted to kind of just do a quick summation, but happy to receive questions from any member of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Valance. I do have a couple of questions. Do you know how many accounts that you have here in Cape Coral and how many accounts that are, are not active at this point? I, I heard you mention something about 6,800. I didn't know if that was just here in the city of Cape Coral. So I'm trying to get what percentage that you feel that your outage is with your customers here in Cape Coral?
Yeah, so, so the data set I use, you know, is, is the network. So, you know, the, the peak, peak for us, runner I should say, you know, it's about 22,000 customers in Cape Coral. You know, about 16,000 are using service. We got about 6,600 not using service. About 3,000 we are aware because we see that from a, you know, our assessments or those customers have reported. I think I inverted that actually, about 3,600 we know, 3,000 we don't know. 3,000 have not reported trouble. We, we don't see them. Those are most likely conditions local to the home or, you know, near, near hood, near neighborhood. But 6,600 are Cape Coral customers not using service following the storm. It's about 30%.
And what is your expectation on the timeline of getting those customers restored? Do you have an expectation on that?
I do. I expect us to recover. Every week we'll make material progress to recover. I do expect though, and I kind of show, I just want to make sure I'm transparent, you know, and sharing, you know, the level of damage is significant and, and so I do anticipate that last customer likely to come up somewhere in that first quarter, early first quarter. I think that risk is real.
First quarter of next year?
2023, that's correct.
So what you're saying is the Century Link customers could be without their internet or their, their service up to the first quarter of next year?
That's correct. That's correct. And again, I want to make sure I repeat, you know, you, you all see, you recognize a level of damage in, in the city, you know, to, to those assets, you know, the poles, the lines, those remote terminals. There's a lot of work ahead of us from a construction perspective to, you know, relay lines. There are some plant we're going to have to simply replace, you know, and, and equipment that has to be, you know, just simply replaced. The storm surge just impacted those, the electronics that are local to the neighborhood in, in many areas and that's going to require us to also replace the cabinet, the electronics and, you know, get that material in site. So, you know, yes, there, there's going to be some extended duration for, for a small set of customers.
And would it be a fair statement to say that since you have about 6,600 people showing as an outage, you know of about 3,600, you're unknown for 3,000? Would it be a fair statement to say it would be your recommendation for those customer holders to contact you directly if they do not have service?
Absolutely. Yeah, we, we've kind of shared via media, you know, we'd like for customers who have not reported and have not got, by the way, we do proactively try to communicate to customers, you know, where we know we have known conditions. If you've not heard from Centralink or Quantum, please call in. Please, we need to know, hey, is this something that you need for us to go to the home, you know, you know, to help facilitate repair of a modem or wiring or the line to the house or, or near, near access, you know, to the house? That is data we use to help guide the restoration process and make us aware, you know, of, of is there something that Central needs to facilitate a help or is this strictly on the homeowner, right? We don't know. I mean, I've heard some great stories today to understand that, you know, for some of these folks, you know, some catastrophic damage and, you know, we love to be there to help these customers, but, you know, that's going to be a personal condition they have to work through. So that is important that we hear from the customers. Please call us, you know, and talk to us.
All right. I don't have any other questions. Any other questions? I appreciate you tuning in with us tonight and give your customers in Cape Coral the insight that they may need as far as expectation and when they'll get their service back. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members, and certainly prepare to come back and talk again as we get deeper into this restoration process. We'll continue to gain clarity and break this down to neighborhoods within, within Cape Coral, so you got the insights and your citizens have insights as well.
And if you would, the only thing that I would ask, you know, I know this is a customer base program that you have, the customers are dealing directly with you, but maybe on a weekly basis, if you could email me what your, you know, what you know, what you've achieved in a, in a, in a week's time. So, uh, e- every seven to ten days, just to keep the city updated on where you are?
Consider it done, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to item seven, which is, uh, citizens input time. Citizens input is a maximum. The sixty minutes is set for input of citizens on matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. We'll be utilizing the podium to my left in front of the double door.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Lunavara, forty-eight-year resident, Cape Coral. Thank you all for your diligence throughout this storm. My heart goes out to everyone and you guys and the citizens. I'm a native Floridian and I just don't remember a hurricane as bad as this. The only thing I could think worse for Lee County is a, a meteor coming in and hitting us now. That, that's the only disaster left, I think, or an errant rocket from North Korea or Russia because I can't remember any devastation like that. Recovery, I, um, still want to ask you to help the citizens out and rescind that, give back the, um, tax break that you had, you know, the kilowatt, eleven-hundred kilowatt rebate. Well, it was five fifty. I like to see it. Let's help the citizens. Now, we saved a few bucks because I didn't have power for ten, twelve days, so that was good. But, uh, you need to address that. We've taken a hit now. I'd like to speak briefly about L C E C. I think the disaster shows how incompetent this company is. Um, those, their toothpick wooden poles, and I have a gift for the council, but the officer said, leave it outside because it's a piece of wood from their toothpick poles that fell over. They don't maintain them. Mine was leaning. We've been around with this and I spoke to the council about a year or so ago. I think you need to get them on the stick. Is that ironic, on the stick, the toothpick poles? Anyway, um, they raised our fuel oil. I heard they've refused F P N L for a while. That wasn't good. I'd like to ask Century Link here, I was glad that gentleman came on. They haven't fixed their wires in ages. That's another thing I made a, uh, presentation about a while back. I've called them, Comcast came out, that's not our wires. L C E C, that's not our wires. I'm glad, Mayor, talk to them. I want to, I've got pictures of wires and it's not only in my neighborhood because no one's using landlines and they don't want to maintain them. I'd like to see you get after them, Mayor. I really would. And, uh, lastly, I hope you look at offense ordinance. All that plastic, that cheap China junk. That's a shame. I feel sorry. I don't have a fence. I want to take one second. Chief Sizemore and Mr. Rob Hernandez, they came to my home, they brought me water and treats for the dogs. These gentlemen have a heart. God bless them. Their kindness will not be forgotten. I was flattered. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Rob. Come back and see us, me and Jasper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Navarre.
Sure. I don't know if I can beat that. Steve Coza, four zero one seven Southwest Eleventh Avenue. First and foremost, I have to thank, uh, the mayor, the council, the police chief, city manager, uh, the fire chief. I was in their shoes back in nineteen ninety-nine. I was the incident commander for Hurricane Floyd, excuse me, when it hit New Jersey. I retired as the acting police chief in a town in Somerset County in New Jersey. Um, your response is, is second to none, and I appreciate that as a resident. I did twenty-eight years in municipal government, but I'm frustrated with your permitting department. Uh, I have to say, I, I didn't want to come here. I'm not a complainer. I don't like complaining in public. I want to go to a person. You can't talk to anybody in the city permitting department. You have a systematic failure in that department. I applied for a permit, an electrical permit in May, Memorial Day weekend. I have still not gotten that electrical permit. Where do I stand now when it comes to the emergency, emergency permitting? Do I go way back at the bottom of a list or do emergency permitting i- is one group of people and regular permitting is a second group of people? I need to know that because I, I just, I, I'm flabbergasted that I'm waiting since May for an electrical permit. And the plumbing permit was issued, but that expired today. So I don't know what I'm going to do with the plumbing permit. It's my question. I don't know where else to, to come. I am not coming here to, to gripe. I, I just want answers. And you can't call, you can't walk in, you wait hours. It's, it's, you have a systematic failure in that department.
Well, have a seat, sir, and we'll have a staff member come over to you and we'll get that looked at.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, Council, um, my name is Philip Ford. I'm the Executive Vice President for the Lee Building Industry Association. And I wanted to bring, uh, something to you tonight that we just, we, you know, as our members are going out and looking at repairs and, and replacements of homes, uh, the FEMA fifty percent rule. And if you don't know what that is, you will certainly find out soon. I want to give you an analysis. The fifty percent rule is simply as follows. Uh, the cost of the work may not exceed fifty percent of the market value. And currently in Cape Coral and Lee County, that also takes into consideration any repairs or work that you permitted over the last five years. So, so once you exceed that fifty percent of value, that, that, that's not the property, that's the house, then you have to elevate your home or bring it up to code. And we heard from Lee County, eighteen thousand structures damaged or destroyed, and we think that's low. Everybody's wondering what we're going to do with housing, how we're going to place people. We need to keep as many people in their houses as possible. So we're asking you to make the following adjustments to your policy. Again, we've, we've asked this of the Lee County Commissioners as well. One is to, and, and other jurisdictions, Fort Myers and others have these already in their policies. One is to remove, uh, reduce the cumulative timeframe from five year to one. Allow for additional thirty percent of the set, value over the assessed market value. Most people go to LIPA. We think there's about a twenty percent adjustment in there, so we go to thirty percent. And one is to exempt hardening costs. A lot of people were told over the last three or four years, you got to put a new roof on your house to get your mortgage or to refi, or you got to put hurricane windows in. Well, right now, if you've done that work over the last five years or you permitted it, um, it's going to count against, uh, your ability to maybe stay in that home without having to tear it down. And frankly, we're talking about probably tearing down, then actually elevating homes. So we ask that you urgently look at this. Again, we met with the Commissioners of Lee County, uh, yesterday, presented this. We're looking at them bringing the ordinance changes back in November first. We're not sure exactly what they're going to do, uh, but before the storm, they were looking at reducing the cumulative value from, of a year from five to one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel, good evening. Paul Beatty, I'm LBI president, Beatty Development and Residence. Good news is I'm not going to complain about Intergov today. Um, I'm going to piggyback off of what he said, this fifty percent rule. My team has literally talked to hundreds of clients and we don't have answers. I'm going to give you two real-life examples. A house in the Yacht Club, appraised value a hundred and six thousand dollars. In the past five years, they pulled twenty thousand dollars worth of permits between roof, air conditioning, electric. That means they literally have thirty-six thousand dollars worth of work. Um, going to take one step farther, a business in downtown, uh, business in downtown Cape Coral. Appraised value, a hundred and seventy thousand. They have half of that in order to get their people back to work. Would this thing, if we don't make these recommendations, it's going to force one of two things. A lot of unpermitted, not-to-code work or hiring unlicensed guys and lying on the permit applications or creating guys like myself to fudge numbers on a permit application that's not true. This wiring thing with saltwater intrusion, rewire a house alone if you had water into your outlets is between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars. You start backing this stuff out, we really have an issue here with this FEMA rule. I don't know what to tell my clients. I can't tell them, hey, your life savings, your house that you own, that you didn't have a mortgage on, now I can't legally permit the work. They're going to call a guy who will come in, pay him cash and do the work, not to code. It's a life safety issue, especially with the saltwater intrusion and all this electrical. So I urge you, like Philip said, we're working with, um, Lee County. We're also working with Sanibel because it's going to be a nightmare out there too, same situation. But these are in the Yacht Club, everywhere residential and our commercial businesses in downtown Cape Coral that got water damage. Um, we need to look at this and hopefully we can have a solution to keep our residents and be able to work this stuff permitted, to code and make sure everybody's safe. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, my name is Kevin Besser with the Royal Palm Coast Realtors Association. I'm actually not here to ask for anything. I'm here to offer assistance. Um, our association, uh, a year ago started a foundation called the Realtors Care Foundation of Southwest Florida. Um, we offer fifteen hundred dollar grants to homeowners to help repair their home in natural disasters in other areas. So I wanted you all, as and staff, to know that, uh, we are taking applications now and are here to help the community as much as we can. Um, we have some funding, but I'm sure it will go fast, but I know a lot of people are in need. We want to keep as many, I echo Phil's comments, want to keep as many people in their homes as we possibly can. I also want to commend you all and thank you all for, uh, rescinding your RV ordinance, allowing people to live in their RVs and their, in, on their properties. That's a huge, huge thing to help continue to rebuild our community. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Rhonda Shortfinger. I live at five four zero one Southwest Sixth Avenue. Uh, on the Monday following the storm, I had gone down to get a permit. It took my husband, my daughter and I several days to pull out the debris. We got flooded. We live over there and I can relate to you, Gloria. Um, so what happened when I went down there was they gave me this packet, City of Cape Coral Department of Community Development. And they would not give me a permit to get my drywall removed. Um, my husband has, um, still getting three-month C T scans. He's recovering from lung cancer. He has C O P D. He's seventy-one years old. Um, so what happened to me when I went down to get the permit was they gave me this packet and said, well, if you're, uh, we need estimates and we need to prove and you need to talk to Wyatt, our flood adjuster, um, in the city of Cape Coral, which there was only one. And they said, because if your repairs are going to exceed the value of your home, um, then you're going to have to tear your home down. So I'm like, okay, well, this isn't right. This isn't going to happen. I'm going to go home and literally tear the drywall out of my house because it's moldy. It's not good. It's not safe. And they said, well, you can go do that if you'd like. You don't need a permit to do that for the safety of your family. So I went on to further to find out that FEMA ha- they have programs and they will have, they have programs where you can get a grant to have your home lifted, raised. They'll pay thirty-eight thousand dollars towards that expense, thirty thousand towards that, which is about thirty-eight thousand, to do that. However, you cannot apply as a citizen yourself, your, you guys would have to apply for us to, that we would qualify because that's what everybody wants is for these older homes to be torn down and, and brought up to, raised up to a, a higher level for safety, of course. I understand that. So there's, there are some things out there that we can do. However, we need your assistance to do them. So I'm in the position now where I really don't know what to do except for tell you my situation so you guys can help me because I can't do the, the grant myself. I have to qualify for it, which I do. And also they said that there are thousands of people in our area that are in the same position to where this fifty percent rule is going to be in effect to them. They're going to have their houses either lifted to the standard or they are going to have them torn down. And they said, we, the state and the local government has to request it and they're going to come in and do a buyout and they will buy everybody out at fair market value prior to the disaster. So here I am, I, I canceled my drywall order because I don't want to have a problem because I don't have a permit to do anything. We're not living in our home. Um, there's, you know, the drywall got tore out and so forth. So I don't know what to do. And what I would like to see happen is for you, even if you have to hire people who have dealt with this before, this is the worst hurricane that Florida has had in nine decades. We're all new to this. But I need a place where we can get, as citizens can get guidance on how to do this and not just FEMA, if I have to have your support to get the, um, you know, if I want to get my house. I don't want to sell my house to FEMA. I want to lift my house without tearing it down because we're, and getting ready to go into the retirement stage. We don't need a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan to buy a new home. Our house was paid for. And to go, also to go back about the seawalls, Gloria, um, our seawall collapsed when Hurricane Irma came through. Corps of Engineers did not come to our rescue. Nobody came to our rescue. We were on our own with that. We are still paying on the loan that we got through the S B A and that's what the S B A will do. They will give you a loan to re, to do your seawall or whatever you need to do.
If you have a seat, we'll have someone from staff help you out with the permitting and we'll try to point you out. Have you been down to the FEMA, uh, Recovery Center at all and applied?
I have, I have been on the phone with FEMA several different times, which is how I got the information about the grants.
So what I would do.
I don't have internet. Um, sometimes at work I can, I'm allowed to go on.
We'll have a seat. We'll, we'll have a staff member that, uh, will take a look at your permitting and try to help you as far as, uh, some of the FEMA things. And there will be some future discussions regarding FEMA. Uh, a lot of those issues, uh, are mandated and regulated by the FEMA, which is.
They are, and that's what I heard at the permitting office as well, Mayor.
All right.
However, for the grants, you guys have to.
Okay. We'll have a seat and we'll have, uh, someone speak with you. Thank you.
I have some questions, not related so much to the hurricane, but a lot related to maybe fiber and the Lumen technologies that just came into Cape Coral and our city.
Could you speak into the mic, ma'am?
Yep. And how they're using maybe third-party contractors that aren't licensed and insure appropriately or pulling the right permits to install these fiber optic cables. Um, since I've had it installed, there's been an overabundance of issues happening at my house after I, um, attended something related to technology, um, a technology business framework. Um, and I can't seem to get them on the phone without being spammed by some of their independent contractors. It doesn't seem like they actually, they're employees of Century Link, so I'm having some concerns with being able to have that stuff identified and resolved, um, overall for myself, no matter what I do. Um, and then I have some, so I'm not sure if they have the, and like, I'm not sure if we are pulling permits for all of this metaverse-based technology, um, that's coming to our area of licensed vans and stuff that aren't, or labeled vans, let me say labels, all of the labels, um, labeled vans that are not that. I know that there's a scam on, between Amazon and Facebook and people paying cash for people to come in and do work to different homes. I know my home's been tampered with multiple times since I've lived here or since I've gotten back from that summit in May. Um, and I haven't gotten any actual help from anybody in the government base. They said they needed a label from the military and they found me, um, that wasn't approved. And, uh, they made me a walking streaming network label for all of technology and artificial intelligence. Um, so I've been doing that for the last five months and I can't get it to stop. Um, so, uh, they spam me every single time that I try to call a lawyer. I try to call somebody for help. Um, and then I always have issues with my Wi-Fi not working or being switched over to my A T and T account. Um, I submitted a report with the C I S A for the cybersecurity infrastructure system to kind of look into this a little bit for me. Um, but since they're using bots and artificial intelligence and, um, I O T, internet of things to kind of, uh, manipulate the situation on me, I don't really have any actual, like, control of a lot of things that are going on. any actual, like, control of a lot of things that are going on. Um, so I kinda wanna see where we can kind of make our neighborhood more of a cyber-safe place, and have some permits or something pulled for people that are installing things on our homes, where they came from, when it was documented, like, if you're gonna do it when somebody's not home, I wasn't home when this stuff was installed, I can't get anybody out there, um, things are going missing from my house, I bought, I built my house a year ago, and I never had any issues until after May, so, um, I don't want to be, you know, uh, this walking, illegal, military, not-approved label, um, that I was given by some people that work with the Internet of Things, so.
Could you, uh, state your name, too, 'cause I didn't hear that in the beginning?
Uh, yeah, it's Marissa Mongello, um, I made a name as Lebecial.
Okay, all right, uh, thank you, and, and maybe have a seat. I really don't know if, uh, what your issue was is a city-related issue, but, um, maybe we could have someone from maybe IT or something, uh, try to have a discussion with her to see exactly what, uh, what her issues are, and maybe we can point her in the right direction. Yes, sir?
Good evening, people, my name is Joe Gensler, I live at twenty-six-thirty-three Southwest Forty-third Terrace, Cape Coral. These are my observations of the Cape and that. Today I came up to see what's kinda going on, and trying to find out what is going on. Today I heard most of accolades at what we've done and how good it went. One of the problems I had was communications from the city, I lost power about eleven days, I listened to TV by, over the air, which is better known as rabbit ears. I never saw the Cape on there saying anything was going on, I heard Sanibel, Fort Myers, I know they got hit hard, but that's too bad. We're the majority of the people around this area. Our city didn't come out to push LCE to get started putting the power back, they're all rushing to Sanibel, Fort Myers. I heard that the city stopped LCE from doing, uh, for two days because of search and rescue, that's why we have the fire department, police department, the wannabes, and the volunteers. Also, LCE was not prepared, as they said they were, they were short of transformers and poles. Also, I know about, a little bit about the stuff there, I've been in construction for many years, soil around here is sand, that poles move, not like northwards, all clay, it's tough to move. Second, the city should have fought more and more to get LCEC again. Sanibel is more of a tourist thing, this is where the people live, we have family, we have children here, nothing was done, no water, that's another thing, how do you boil water without electricity? I was trying to figure that one out. Also, on this trash, or debris pickup, especially the horticulture, in my area where it is, we had mostly brush, horticulture down, we didn't have any furniture thrown out in the streets. But I'm seeing trucks on Oasis Beach Drive picking up trees and that, it's not blocking traffic or safety. I see the people in Pelican Yacht Club, trash piled up a mile high, that should have been the first place we took off and done it, doesn't seem like any coordination to me. We didn't, we just didn't, you know, we were picked up, was it easy to pick it up and make our money there? The coordination should have been, I don't, I don't understand what the coordination was. I'm just a peon, but I could tell, and these people need that stuff out of there, especially we had a hell of a windstorm Saturday night, looked like a hurricane just came back through. Um, it kinda made me mad on that. LCEC is very incompetent of what they're doing, they say stuff, they send out billings, we're all prepared, we're all doing this, we're all doing great, we're not. But I didn't see RCA really stand up for the people of this city, I've been here twenty-six years, and we should have been fighting every bit of the way, dragging those, uh, LCE people in here. Also, LCEP wanted the other co-ops to help, until our great governor made them start work. They were scared about getting paid, and I'm hearing that tonight, that we don't know if we're gonna get paid, we don't wanna start. Second thing, I've never trusted the federal government when they tell me they're gonna help me, they don't. You just fill out paperwork, then you find out you're not really qualified, you make too much, you don't have it. Look at ION, or how long it took them before they even get some relief, thank you, that's my-
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed, is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item eight, which is Ordinance and Resolutions and Introductions, Resolution two-oh-two dash twenty-two, Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Resolution two-oh-two dash twenty-two, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements lying in lots four through seven, block fifteen forty-six, Cape Coral, Unit Seventeen, Part One, as more particularly described herein. Property located at three-two-nine Del Prado Boulevard North, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be November second, two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, move on to Resolution two-oh-three dash twenty-two, Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Resolution two-oh-three dash twenty-two, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Lucerne Canal right-of-way, located adjacent to lots fifteen and sixteen, block five, Cape Coral, Unit One, Part Two, providing for the vacation of plat for public utility and drainage easements associated with lots fifteen and sixteen, block five, Cape Coral, Unit One, Part Two, property located at fifty-six forty-six Riverside Drive, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be November second, two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to Resolution two-oh-seven dash twenty-two, Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Resolution two-oh-seven dash twenty-two, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for easements underlying a previously vacated alley in public utility and drainage easements, lying between lots sixty-three through sixty-eight and sixty-nine through seventy-five, block thirty-three sixty-seven, Cape Coral, Unit Sixty-five, as more particularly described herein. Property located at eight-oh-eight Southwest Forty-second Terrace, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be November second, two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, let's move on to, uh, Ordinance eighty-five dash twenty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance eighty-five dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as a tract or parcel of land lying in a portion of the northeast quarter of Section Thirty-Six Township Forty-three South, Range Twenty-two, East Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein, from agricultural to neighborhood commercial zone. Property is located at thirty-nine twenty-six, forty-one twenty, and forty-one forty Kismet Parkway, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November second, two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ordinance eighty-three dash twenty-two, Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance eighty-three dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from public facilities to multifamily residential land use for property described as all of block twenty-eight, Unit Thirty-one, Cape Coral subdivision. Property located at fourteen twenty-nine, Northeast Fifteenth Avenue, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November second, two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ordinance fifty-two dash twenty-two, Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance fifty-two dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from commercial slash professional to multifamily land use for property described as lots twelve through sixteen, block thirty-one hundred, Unit Sixty-two, Cape Coral subdivision. Property located at nineteen seventeen Southwest Santa Barbara Place, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November second, two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ordinance ninety dash twenty-two, Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance ninety dash twenty-two, an ordinance providing for the annexation of six parcels of land described as lots one, two, fourteen, and fifteen, block three, Pandella Heights, Unit Two, and lots twenty and twenty-one, block two, Pandella Heights, Unit Two, as more particularly described herein, providing for redefinition of city boundaries, providing for City of Cape Coral Fire Department and Utility Services, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November second, two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ordinance ninety-one dash twenty-two, Madam City Clerk, please read the title and set the public hearing date.
Ordinance ninety-one dash twenty-two, an ordinance providing for the annexation of five parcels of land described as parcels of land lying in the northwest one-quarter of Section Twenty Township Forty-four South, Range Twenty-three East, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein, providing for redefinition of city boundaries, providing for City of Cape Coral Fire Department and Utility Services, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November second, two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ordinance eighty-four dash twenty-two, Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance eighty-four dash twenty-two, an ordinance providing for the release of the perpetual stormwater drainage easement as recorded on June twelfth, nineteen ninety-seven in the public records of Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein. Property located off of Diplomat Parkway East, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November second, two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty-two, Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty-two, an ordinance approving the sale of municipal surplus real property described as all of lots twelve through seventeen, block sixty-four hundred, all of tract G, and all of lots one through five, block sixty-four oh-one, all of tract F, and all of lots one through seven, block sixty-four oh-two, all of tract E, and all of lots one through four, block sixty-four oh-three, all of tract D, and all of lots one through three, block sixty-four oh-four, all of tract C, and all of lots one and two, block sixty-four oh-five, all of tract B, and all of lots one through seven, block sixty-four oh-six, and all of tract A, and all of lots one through eight, block sixty-four oh-seven, all is shown on the plat of Cape Coral, Unit Seventy-Six, The Islands, recorded in plat book thirty-five at pages one-twenty-one through one-twenty-nine of the public records of Lee County, Florida, containing approximately forty-seven acres pursuant to Section two-dash-one-five-five of the City of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, authorizing and directing the mayor and clerk to execute a deed conveying the aforementioned surplus real property to Gulf Gateway Resort and Marina LLC. Property located at one-oh-six Old Burnt Store Road North and six-oh-six Old Burnt Store Road North, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November second, two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ordinance ninety-three dash twenty-two, Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance ninety-three dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending the Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter Ten, Land Waterway Use Restrictions, Article Two, Waterway Regulations, by creating Section ten-dash-one-five-point-three mooring prohibition regarding mooring prohibitions for boats in the city's waterways, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November second, two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ordinance ninety-four dash twenty-two, Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance ninety-four dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending the Cape Coral Code of Ordinances by repealing Chapter Twelve, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article One, General Provisions, Section Twelve dash thirteen, Alarms, in its entirety, regarding alarm systems in the city, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be November second, two thousand twenty-two.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item nine, New Business, nine A is Resolution one-fifty-four dash twenty-two, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this particular item is similar to interlocal agreements that you have entered into before with the, your community redevelopment agency essentially allowing our Parks and Recreation Department to serve as the lead for a public art project that, um, will take into account installing, uh, public art in, um, Founder's Park, and also public art that will go into what's known as the Big John's parking lot, um, where we're looking at beautifying the concrete, um, dumpster enclosures that are in the parking lot.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve Resolution one-fifty-four dash twenty-two?
Move.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden, Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, Resolution two-oh-four dash twenty-two, Mr. City Manager.
I'm gonna defer to Development Services, Mr. Cetero.
Vince Cetero, this is a, a plat that just memorializes a drainage easement, uh, it's one lot or remain one lot, um, the owner of the lot wishes to develop, and the development plan necessitated a need for a greater easement, and, and that is in your backup packet, you can see that in the map. If you'd like, I can put the map up on the screen.
Sure, my understanding is we're gonna be, uh, asking for a motion for a continuance in this matter, um, so I guess, uh, if we're gonna continue, uh, this particular matter to a later date, then I guess we'll, we'll wait till then to, to hear all the facts. Is there a motion to continue?
Motion to approve to continue.
Second.
I believe it's to be continued to the second.
So the, the motion is to continue Resolution two-oh-four dash twenty-two to our November second, two thousand twenty-two?
Exactly, that is my motion.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Second agrees?
Second agrees.
Right, is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Resolution two-oh-nine dash twenty-two, uh, Mr. City Manager.
This particular, uh, request, uh, Mr. Mayor, is to terminate an agreement, um, with Catalyst Community Capital under the city's CDBG, um, Community Development Block Grant Program. This is for a, um, affordable housing project along Pine Island Ru, Road, this particular entity is no longer gonna be participating in that project, so we ask counsel determining.
Okay, is there a motion to, uh, to approve Resolution two-oh-nine dash twenty-two?
So move.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item D is waiver of a conflict of interest with the law firm Henderson Franklin Starnes and Hope, and we will need a motion, uh, to approve this, uh, waiver of conflict, uh, but I will turn it over to Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, um, this, this waiver of conflict of interest is needed because the Henderson Franklin Law Firm often represents the City of Cape Coral, they're seeking to, um, also represent a client in a land use matter, uh, we don't really anticipate any, uh, actual conflict of interest, uh, this is an excess of caution and to comply with ethical rules, uh, they would not engage in representing either party in the event that litigation were to become necessary. This is optional for you to, if you don't want them to do this, then you would not need to execute this, but if you don't mind them, uh, representing that client, uh, before the city, then they would need the waiver.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the waiver of conflict of interest?
So move.
Second.
Can I just ask a question?
And Madam, or Councilmember Tate?
So, um, Madam City Attorney, you're recommending that it's okay to do this, right?
Yes, we've reviewed it, and we don't think that there would be any really true actual conflict.
Thank you, that was all I had.
And is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item E is additional meeting request, uh, we have two proposed dates for upcoming meeting, uh, as a result of the hurricane, uh, first is a special meeting on Wednesday, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, uh, at three PM, uh, and our second, uh, one will be a committee of the whole meeting on Thursday, October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, uh, at nine AM.
to make it similar to what you've done in the past with evaluations for your council office staff, city, and if you had identified earlier, city auditor and city attorney. So it would be specifically for those three items and held in a different conference room with an audio recording.
In my understanding, we have a regular meeting scheduled for October twenty-sixth already?
We have a regular one at four thirty.
Okay. All right, so we're requesting to have a special meeting on the twenty-sixth at three P. M. The topic of discussions will be outlined as the city clerk had mentioned, and the second one will be a committee of the whole meeting on Thursday, October twenty-seventh. Do we have a motion to approve these two additional meetings?
So move.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cosdine?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next item on agenda is item ten, which is reports. Councilmember Cosdine, report.
I have no report.
Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, I didn't say anything earlier, but just to echo some of the things that were said about staff and leadership during the hurricane, some things that really stood out to me, and I've already told staff this, but I haven't told the public this, how the city manager, fire chief, police chief, public works director, I'm really proud of their response, not only during the storm, but ahead of time to prepare us for what we might face. No one thought we'd ever see the worst-case scenario, and we did, and we've lived through it. The stories of a public works director going valve to valve, hydrant to hydrant, to try and restore water to the hospital, using a fire hose to make the final connection within three minutes of that hospital having to evacuate after other hospitals in the area had already evacuated was testimony to his courage, his leadership. I know he didn't sleep for a really long time after that, but you saw that all throughout the city from the fire chief and spending time with him. One thing I, that happened to me during the storm that hadn't happened in my previous ones, in my previous job, I had access to information twenty-four-seven. I was at my place of employment, living there during hurricanes, and this particular time, I didn't have access to much information, so I was almost in withdrawal. So the fire chief and Maureen Byce kind of became my two people to update me every day on what was happening, and I really appreciated that. I was able to also attend an event with the fire chief on Saturday where people were helping out, coming from all over the country and helping out residents, and for him to include me in that meant a lot. For the police chief to include me in a meeting of police chiefs that came from all over the country and the men and women that were deployed here to relieve our folks and the advice they offered and how it was taken to hardbar, police chief was amazing. Going over each day to our makeshift cafeteria behind City Hall and listening to employees, talking with them, how dedicated they were to the mission of getting the city back up on its feet. No one, I repeat, no one complained. They were all dedicated to what they needed to do despite what they might be facing at their homes. To a council member who lost her house and most of her business, and the only thing she's thought of was helping other people, credible. To another council member who showed up at Red Cross every day to help with people. I think when you're elected, you really don't know. You kind of search for what your role might be. Ours was defined by Ian. Our role as a council will be to help guide this city through recovery, get it back on its feet, and make it stronger. So that's certainly been defined for me. One of the other defining stories was R. E. M. Ts showing up at a nursing home, local nursing home, after staff had abandoned them and helping these residents who came out into the hallway and hugged them, you know, for being there, for staff, for assisting a Coast Guard captain when his sailboat got stuck on property of ours behind Seven Islands and staff going out there to assist him and what they were doing, and to staff's dedication to helping me when I would help individual to individual on different things, and making sure they got the help that they needed was impressive. We are the template, we are the model for, God forbid, any other city has to go through this, but they will be reaching out to us on how we did this, and it's a testimony, Mr. City Manager, to you and to your staff for everything they did. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Long, no report. Councilmember Nelson?
Just a couple of quick things. You know I'm a big sap, but I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, to all of our staff, to all of you for working around the clock. I saw snippets of it as I would come and relax in my guys' office in between serving lunch and dinner with several other service organizations, and to echo what the city manager said about staying out of the way, I learned that pretty quickly, I think twenty-four hours after the storm, after I'd called the mayor and the city manager saying, hey, all my nonprofit peeps want to come into the city, and they're like, uh, uh, I was like, you know what? I'm just going to handle it. So I thank my council teammate Gloria Tate for assisting me with getting them set up at some of the churches in town, but I just want to say how proud I am of our city and how proud I am of all of you for just dedicating yourselves and all of us. You know, I think probably there were very, two very profound moments during the storm. One was seeing Councilmember Tate come out of her house in the morning and me just being there and not knowing what else to do other than to hug her, and so that's what I did. And I think the second one was, the first day I got on the truck with the Red Cross, they said, oh, we're going to go to a Publix. I looked at them and said, you're going to a Publix parking lot? Do you want to see like, I mean, does this, does this big truck go into disaster areas? And they said, absolutely. I said, let me take you to a disaster area. And we went to Councilmember Tate's area and saw many elderly people who hadn't left their home and were waiting for their kids to come and help them. So it was, it was just incredible. I thank the mayor, I thank the city manager, I thank all of staff. You guys rocked. You're great leaders, and I'm proud to be part of your team. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd.
Once again, thank you for everyone for just going over and above. I want to thank our governor for everything that he's done for us as well, and I want to remind families that be overprotective of your children right now when they're out playing. There's a lot of danger out there. There's scrap metal laying around, nails, screws, debris. The hospital is getting a lot of people coming in with infections from the dirty water going into people's cuts and abrasions, and it's causing a lot of problems, so just be cautious of that. Also, we have a lot of people with pools now that aren't surrounded by fence or pool cage, so I do not want to hear about a child drowning. None of us want to hear that, so just be overprotective of our children. Don't let them wander. It's not safe in the neighborhoods right now. There's a lot of dangerous things, so just keep that in mind until we get everything fixed, thank you.
Councilmember Tate?
Thank you. Well, there's really nowhere to start other than just a big thank you. Rob and John were at my house about five minutes after I saw, and it was pretty devastating, but you know what? This city came together like I've never seen. I'm so proud to be sitting here. Somebody running from my seat called me and said, hey, you were supposed to leave it better than you found it, and I said, well, that's a problem. So, but I promise you, when I leave, I'm going to make sure this city comes back stronger and better than ever. The one thing that I think we need to see if we can determine, so my insurance company just called while I was sitting here, and he said, we're going to send you some money to get some things rebuilt. My question is, the same one that everyone in the yacht club in Pelican has, is how do we know that we can rebuild? Because somebody's telling us we have to raise it, and somebody's telling us maybe we can't get insurance. I think that for the thousands of people living in our district, we need to figure out, how can I get an answer for that? Because I don't know where to go. We talked about today changing the, not the FEMA fifty-fifty rule, but the five-year rule, and so when will we be addressing that? And who can help me figure out how to get an answer for that one question that all the people in my district have in my neighborhoods? I'm not talking about just me, I'm talking about everybody down there. Can anybody direct us to that particular answer? That's all I got.
A question on whether you're going to be required to...
To raise the property.
So that's something like we discussed this afternoon that we will continue to work, work on, just like we discussed earlier today, we're going to get in contact with property owners just to alert them that they may want to hold off on making any significant financial investments in their property until we get this issue resolved.
Did you come up with a, I know it's only been a couple hours, but a plan on how we're going to get that word out?
No, I think what we discussed was going property by property with a list and just dropping off a door tag that basically, you know, and we mentioned, you know, call before you dig, right? For A-one-one, it'll be something very similar. Call before you expend any significant dollars. So what we have to do is we have to get organized here when people call. We want to make sure that somebody is there to answer that phone. We may not have all the answers, but what we will commit to is as early as your next cow to continue to work with representatives at FEMA to see if we can get definitive answers to the question ultimately of, will you be allowed to repair what you, what's there today, or are you going to have to raise and rebuild?
Because people that are cutting out their drywall now and moving back into their homes, they may or may not be able to be insured.
That's correct.
And they may, because they should have rebuilt. So any help that you can give us on that, I would appreciate. And again, this team is phenomenal. I heard stories about everyone being heroic and horrific, and it was just, it was just amazing to watch this city come together like we did. So I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Councilmember Long, I see you have your light on.
I just wanted to follow up on a discussion that we had earlier in the cow with regards to the topic Mr. Tate was just talking about. Do we, did we need to do anything here to get that special meeting for the planning and zoning board?
We got to decide first on what we're going to do.
Okay, well, I know, but I didn't know if that was something that we could get on the books.
Yeah, so I think we were going to move forward with getting with the planning and zoning board to call a special meeting to take, to make their recommendations to city council on all those changes that we talked about today, right? The five-year cumulative, I think also adding an additional, whether it was twenty or thirty percent, and the assessed value and so forth. So all those things that we talked to today, we think we got enough direction from council to move forward with those land development code amendments, to bring to P. N. Z. and to bring that immediately for council action, and that would be in the month of November.
Great, so we don't need to do anything now in order to get that ball rolling?
Unless the attorney thinks I'm incorrect, I don't think you have to do anything else. Staff is taking care of all of that, and then we'll be bringing it back to you for a vote.
Awesome, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that so we didn't miss it.
Can we get those final numbers from Mike? I believe you told us how many homes were in that particular area and see how, exactly how many are affected there.
I remember the map, I think it was a total of seven thousand five hundred and thirty-three, but that was all commercial and residential properties in all A. E. and V. E. zones in the city.
Okay.
That's how many properties are affected by it. Potential universe of affected properties.
And then once we get to that discussion, it would be nice to know that number of how many people maybe are red-tagged?
Yes, we have staff working on that.
Okay.
Didn't have that available for...
The mayor, you remember, is it five, is it one, will affect everybody?
Right.
So before they go changing everything, we need to have a discussion, because you brought that up.
Okay, Councilmember Welsh, report.
No report, just a big thank you to the city leaders that worked day and night to get us back to where we are now, to even have these meetings all day long today. So thank you to the staff and hope everyone's doing well.
Thank you. For me, I mentioned some of it earlier. Again, I just want to thank staff for incredible job they did for this particular event. You know, I knew Chief Lamb and his team, they trained for this, and you know, it's a day that you hope never gets here. You train for it, but you hope that day never, never shows up at your doorstep. Unfortunately, it did this time. So thank God that, you know, we were trained, prepared, and, you know, we'll move through this, and, you know, we'll be stronger at the end, I believe, so. But I did want to just commend staff, again, they did a phenomenal job. You know, I was with them in the E. O. C. every step of the way. People were up in the beginning for a couple days straight, and then we went to twelve-hour shifts. We were sleeping in the hallways, we were sleeping in the offices or wherever we could find a place to get a couple hours of sleep. I know many individuals, you know, were up days, days on end, so we came together as a, as a, as a city with the city staff. I want to thank each and every one of those individuals that were out there in the field, whether it was our police and fire or first responders, our members from the utilities department or public works department. Everyone did a phenomenal job, and I just wanted to say personally, thank you for your dedication that you, that you had for, for your community. You know, during this event, I will say that I was on the phone just about daily with one of three people in the governor's office, either the governor himself, our first lady, or one of his top executive staff, sometimes twice a day. So they were there all the way to give us the help any way that we could, reached out to some federal authorities as well. You know, one of the things, this was the first event that I was in with the E. O. C., and just like Chief Lamb had mentioned earlier, there were times when we were frustrated on some of the requests that we were making. We knew that our community was hurting, but it just seems like it just took so long to get, get the help that we knew that they needed. But, you know, that's, that's government, I guess, and at some point, we'll all sit back, we'll reevaluate and analyze our response, we'll make recommendations internally, and I'm sure we'll make, you know, we'll make recommendations to our state and federal authorities as well, so they know maybe there's room for their improvement as well. We could maybe be an example of maybe not how to do something with some of our other agencies or how we could do a better job of it. I just asked our community to stay patient, you know, as far as the debris, you've heard it tonight, you know, we have eight years of debris sitting on the ground. I wish I could snap my fingers and it's all gone tomorrow. I just can't imagine someone like Councilmember Tate that had basically lost everything, but when they show up at their house to maybe meet their adjuster or FEMA representative, they have to look and, look at that pile every day. It's bad enough that it happened to them, but to be reminded of that on a daily basis, I just can't imagine. So, you know, I just want to let the community know that we are working hard, we're working diligently to get that debris picked up. I know you don't want to look at it, and we do not want to look at it as well, so we have a, I think we've had a contractor that we had a contract with. I think we're much better prepared for this particular storm. That was almost a category five storm that hit us that was more devastating than Irma, but we are well ahead. If you look at where we are today compared to where we were the same amount of days with Irma, we are leaps and bounds ahead of where we were then, so we have improved. I'm not saying that we can't make improvements going forward. I'm sure there are things that we will do better the next time, but just hang in there. We'll get through this. We're with you every step of the way. We'll get some of these answers that I know our community is looking for as far as FEMA. We'll get some of these answers that I know our community is looking for as far as FEMA, as far as what we'll be allowed to do and what we won't be allowed to do. So we'll get those answers. So thank you. I see your, your hand up, sir, but I'll get with you after the meeting. So that's all I have. Mr., I'll go to Madam City Attorney first.
I have no report.
Mr. City Manager.
So I'm just going to keep it very, very brief, Mr. Mayor, and again, I want to just repeat my gratitude to all of the employees and to all of you and to all the residents and businesses here in Cape Coral for their actions, but I wanted to share a story with you because this is going to really stand out for me, and I don't think I'm ever going to forget this. This is probably, I don't know, my sixth, seventh, eighth hurricane. So right during the peak, I think, of, of the winds, Mike I comes up to me and he says, Rob, we're having a problem across the street at PD. We may have to relocate all of the police dispatchers from the EOC, I'm sorry, from the Public Safety Building over to the EOC. And he says, I'll make it short, but basically, you want to go over with me and Eric over to the public, the Public Safety Building. Now, mind you, winds are probably ripping 120, 130 miles an hour, and I'm going, we're going out in this, and they says, yes, PD is sending their, the Bearcat over, it's going to come up to the ramp, we're going to run out, hop in the Bearcat, go over to the Public Safety Building. So Eric Olive, the city electrician that you saw in his cape and flip-flops, can reset the generator there. So we went over there, and as we're watching the roofs over at Salus Care get peeled off, debris flying everywhere, we go over to the police building, we do what we have to do over there, and then the call comes in that Eric has got to go back over to the EOC and work on the generator that's sitting underneath this 150-foot tower that's wavering back and forth like this, and while the wind is blowing, while it's raining, he's got to figure this thing out so it doesn't go down. So he runs out there and he does that, and just, and I'm not exaggerating, no more than two or three hours later, a big piece of equipment comes flying off of that tower, crashing down into the ground where Eric was there a couple hours earlier trying to keep the system up. And I will tell you, lots of hurricane heroes from Ryan to Mike Ilchison, but that really stands out, and I'm going to make sure that we take care of them. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Move on to time and place of our next meetings. We have a regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, October 26th, six, beginning at 4:30 PM. We also, on that particular day, have a special meeting at 3:00 PM. I believe that's going to be in Conference Room 220. That's also on the 26th, October 26th, at 3:00 PM, and we have a special meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. I already mentioned that one. And we have a committee of the whole meeting that is scheduled for Thursday, October 27, 2022, 9:00 AM here in council chambers. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.